Good evening and welcome to the Sletta Independent School District's Board Retreat. We invite you to share your comments with the board during the public comment portion of our meeting. Public comment sign up cards show the rules for participating legally. The board may listen but may not enter into discussion on the issue raised. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:03 PM. We have a quorum with Mr. Soltero Ramirez, Mike Rosales, Connie Woodruff, Catherine Lucero, Rich Gudere, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Mr. Bustillos is running a little bit late. Trustee Lucero, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God and indivisible. There is no public comment this evening. We will now turn the workshop over to our facilitator, Monica Haloma, from Region 19, and retreat to the larger table behind us. Number one, required team building session as outlined in District Policy BBD, facilitated by Region 19, Monica Haloma. And I'm calling... That's right, okay.
I'm going to change review for a little bit. We're gonna go ahead and move to the back.
You're assigned seating?
Whatever you want to sit.
And that's why, what grade can I put here?
Good evening. My name is Monica Haloma and I am a professional development consultant at Region 19. I do a lot of work with our board across the region, so I really appreciate the invite to take you through this process. What we're gonna be discussing today, our focus today will be on House Bill 3, and we're going to be focusing on goal setting. As a board, what are the steps that need to be taken to adopt goals for your district? So before we get started, you do have some materials, so please feel free to take notes on that little composition book. I will be giving you a PowerPoint in a little bit, but as we get started, and maybe if we can go ahead and display the PowerPoint on the screen, please? Thank you. So I do have an objective for us in the next hour. May I have a volunteer to read our objective for today?
Review HB3 requirements related to board and district goal setting.
Okay, so that's what we're gonna be engaging on in the next hour. So before we do that, though, I want us to take a moment to think about this question that I have posted for you. And before you write, I'll give you some time to think about it, and then you may write it in about 10 words or less. After your time in leadership with your school system, when your leadership time in your school system has ended, what difference do you want to have made in the lives of students? As you're thinking about your leadership role as a board member for your district, what impact on students do you most hope to have had at the end of your time in leadership with your school system? In 10 words or less? Think about it.
In 10 words or less?
Yes. And then please go ahead and write it down. So this time, I would like for you to turn to your shoulder partner and share those 10 words. If you can go ahead and point her up, and then you... I'm gonna put you in the trial if you don't mind. All right? So let's take some time to share what's the impact that you wish you would have made.
I did, but I told him it...
Educational system for...
I was just trying to stay within those two words. To me, thriving means teachers that are... Great teachers.
The impact I want to do is have graduation rates go up and have more students go to college.
Based on HB3...
Oh, I'm...
To measure such goals and to establish a systematic method of measuring.
The other thing too is that based on what we've been doing these last two days, you know, I would like for us to be the District of One, you know?
And we make the news.
We used to be. Thank you. Okay, so now that everybody had an opportunity to share, who would like to share with the rest of the group? Thank you.
When I leave, I want to make sure that we solidify the educational system for our kids, that we have a good foundation. We've been working towards that goal. And I just want to make sure that it's solid after I leave, that it continues on years after we're all gone.
Yeah. Thank you for sharing, and thank you so much for going first. Who would like to go next?
I will. Thank you.
Mr....
I'll go.
Okay. That every single child matters, that I've had an impact in shaping the academic and socio-emotional component in learning.
Thank you.
Based on HB3, I would want to establish a meaningful level of goals, establish a plan to measure the progress of such goals, and a systematic method of... I didn't know. I guess I did the same thing. I guess really that's it, measuring the progress of such goals.
All right. Thank you for sharing.
I'll go next. Create academic equity to ensure all students maximize potential and goals. And then for the second question, feel that they got it, that students got a quality education that prepared them for the next step.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead. Mine is real simple because I've tried to stay within the 10 words.
Thank you so much for trying to stay within those 10.
I said, giving students learning environments which help them thrive. And I don't mean thrive in just the sense of a building. I'm talking about all parts of the educational system.
The fine arts, everything.
Everything, yeah.
Thank you. Dr. Delatorre?
I think we have a responsibility to provide a rich academic experience and position our students to thrive as adults, both economically and socially.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for sharing. And as you were sharing... Oh, my one more.
That's fine. Dito, dito, dito. I'm good for that.
Thank you. I apologize. So as we're hearing those goals, all of your goals have to do with students. How are we going to set those systems in place to support our students and that those systems stay in place even after you leave and someone else is sitting there? This might be a little refresher. This slide comes from the orientation to the Texas Education Code. So Chapter 11 and then Section 1515. So as a board, your first priority, your priority number one, is to provide oversight regarding student academic achievement and strategic leadership for maximizing student performance. Is your first priority to make sure that the budget is balanced? No. It helps, right? That needs to be in place in order for our students. It is important for students to be successful. But that is not your priority. Is your priority to make sure that you have the latest technology with the most amazing buildings? No, that's part of it. It's important to make sure that we have that. But your top priority is making sure that your students are achieving high standards when it comes to those two academics. Okay, so that's your number one priority. As we're thinking about these goals that now we need to develop because of HB3, there's two things that I want us to make sure that we understand. And let me give you... I have the presentation, so feel free to take notes on the presentation or you're note taker. If you can, please go ahead and pass, grab one and pass the rest.
Just give it. They'll come back to me.
Can I have one? There we go. You got...
Okay. Thank you.
So your critical understandings, where you have these statements in quotes? Where are the quotes from?
So these come from that, from the Texas Education Code, that Chapter 15. So as we're thinking about the educational setting, you represent the vision of your community. You represent the values. So that is why you have the task of developing these student outcome goals that we're going to talk about. Your job is to do that because you were voted in by your community. Now, you hired... You're not the educational experts, right? Do you all have... Do I have any teachers, any superintendents in the room with the exception of Dr. Delatorre?
I'm a teacher, teacher, teacher. Ex-teacher and administrator.
So as we're thinking about the board and your role as a trustee, you were elected by your community. Your task is to represent the vision and the values of your community. As you do that, then you hire your educational expert. And the educational expert is your superintendent. So as we're thinking about these goals, because you represent the community, it is going to be your task to come up with these student outcome goals that align to the vision and the values of your community. Now, the one that is going to execute those goals will be your superintendent because he is your educational expert. So that's gonna be his job. You're gonna tell him, this is where we want to go in the next five years, and it will be his role to make sure that he takes you to those goals. Okay? He's not the expert when it comes to the community, so it's not his role to develop those goals. That is your task. After you give those goals to him, then he will be responsible for ensuring that those take place. As we're thinking about HB3, we're gonna talk about how HB3 is recommending that we adopt three goals. Two of those have to do with early childhood, and then one would be on the CCMR. Okay? So why is this taking place? Have you heard about the 60/30 Texas Goal? What is that about?
60% of Texans will have an associate's certificate or bachelor's degree by 2030.
So one of the things that we want to make sure is that we don't wait until 2030 to see if we accomplish that or not. What we're requiring to do now is come up with those three goals. Two that will focus on the lower grade levels, and then one that will focus on college career and military readiness to ensure that there is a plan within the district to meet those goals. Okay? So if we look at your handout or the screen, the third bullet says that 60% of all students meeting the state's MITS standard at third grade reading. So that is one. As we're thinking about the lower grades, we're going to come up with a student outcome goal in reading, literacy, and mathematics. Okay, so literacy and mathematics, you will come up with a student outcome goal. And then your third goal will have to do with 60% of all high school students.
Let me stop you here. I'm not an educator. You said literacy, and where is this thing?
You will see it later. That's not on that screen, on that slide. Okay? So that one will be your MITS. That's your second bullet, so MITS at third grade reading. And then we have the one for CCMR, 60% of your students graduating college career or military ready without remediation. So that's one thing that I would like for us to dig a little bit deeper on. When we're talking about no remediation, and as we're talking about state accountability, as we're talking about our STAR, we have four levels of performance. The first level is that when we have students at that master's grade level, then that means that our students can be promoted to the next grade without any remediation. In addition to being able to be promoted to the next grade, research also says that our students at the master's level have a 75% chance of post-secondary success without remediation. Okay? As we get into the MITS grade level, then they have a likelihood of succeeding to the next grade level. They may still need a little bit of remediation, but they're gonna be successful. Now, that 70% chance of being successful goes down to 60%.
The post-secondary remediation means that they don't... They can jump right into calculus or any of those without taking the algebra classes again and all that?
Yeah, they can just go straight without taking any of those remediation courses that when we have students that are not ready to move into regular courses, they have to go back and spend time and then spend their money, right? So one of the things that we're finding out is that as our students are going to college without achieving that master's grade level, many of our students are not able to finish college because their financial aid runs out because they had to take those remediation courses at the beginning of their studies at the university or college. Okay? So that's that difference between that master's and the MITS grade level. So MITS, that's 60% chance of being successful. And as we're thinking about approaches, at the approaches level, the students will be likely to be successful in the next grade level, but they will need targeted academic intervention. What does that mean to you as you're having your students in your district? If they need to move on to the next grade level and they need remediation, how is that gonna work? Tutoring, right? And if they need tutoring, then what do you need to do?
Pay teachers?
Pay teachers. So if we need to pay teachers, where is it gonna impact?
Well, you have to set up a...
Campus funds.
You have to have a strategic plan so that you can establish a program to assist these students, which is part of the...
As you're having your students... If they need to move on to the next grade...
I have a question here.
Yes, sir.
You look at it, and I don't disagree. But one thing that comes up is...
If they need tutoring, then what do you need to do?
And meets the grade and songs with pay teachers? What happens with a child that number one might have dyslexia? Or has a tremendous issue with the language problem?
Yeah.
And I hear, I'm teaching to the choir here, but what do we do with these? These are perfect if you don't have any of these things. And I know there's a... Children come in all kinds of different abilities, so how do we measure? How do we cope with these issues, true issues?
Yeah.
Not political issues, the real issues that exist.
Yes, and that is a great question. As we continue to dive a little bit deeper, I'm going to explain to you how, once you have your goals, then we're gonna have to keep track of how our students receiving special ed services, our EL students, our English language students, how we are going to be making sure that we are addressing them and that they don't get lost within these numbers or, you know, the students are at the level where we want them to move forward. But all of that is going to start by you developing those goals for your students. Then your educational expert will come up with a plan, and I will tell you a little bit more about those requirements. He will come up with a plan that is going to ensure that you get, that your district meets those goals. Great question. We will talk about how we're going to include those student groups. So the approaches level, they will need interventions. And then the students at the did not meet grade level, they will be unlikely to succeed at the next grade level without significant ongoing academic intervention. So if we needed to intervene at the approaches level for our students through tutoring, when it comes to the did not meet, those students are going to need very targeted intervention. So the approaches level, they will need interventions. Significant, depending on the framework that your district is using, like for example, a lot of our districts use hard-to-give intervention. So when we have students at the did not meet grade level, they may be at tier three, which is like at the highest level of need. So that may mean tutoring every day. It may mean tutoring... Sometimes it's like between three to five days a week. At that tier three, then again, that depends on the system that we have running here. At the approaches grade level, sometimes that can be either one or twice a week providing tutoring. So when we're talking about the did not meet grade level, it's just this very targeted and focused plan to ensure that our students are learning those objectives, to close those gaps. Because at the did not meet grade level, that's a huge gap that our students may have. So what's taking place to close those gaps?
Again, those are students that are making the effort to try to meet those levels. And we have students, which I'm very familiar with, that they just go to class just so they keep their parents out of trouble. But they don't want to perform. They don't... No matter what plans you throw at them, they're not going to respond to any of this. How do you address those?
So that will be up to your educational expert. When you come up with your targets, as I continue explaining to you these student outcome goals, as we're talking about those targets, then what are gonna be your targets? Let's say, for example, that you come up with a goal that has to do with reading, and you're saying 100% of our students will be at the MITS grade level by 2025. That's saying that you're expecting 100% of your third graders to be at that level. So as you engage in that development of goals, then it's gonna be up to you. Are we okay with 60% of our third graders, you know, being at the MITS? Are we okay with 75? What is the vision and what are the values of our community? Where do we want our students to be? That will be up to you. That is going to be why you were voted in. Okay? So continuing with the plan requirements, this HB3 is requiring all school boards across Texas to adopt detailed plans developed by the management team. So this plan will be developed by your superintendent with the support of his cabinet. You come up with the three goals, and then your superintendent will come up with a plan that is going to address your ELs, that will be addressing your students receiving special ed services, or the students that are just there to be there and that don't want to be successful. Here is where we're specifying the goals. So the first one will be early childhood literacy, and then another one for early childhood math. Okay, we're going to be looking at that proficiency. Your third goal is going to be college career and military readiness, your CCMR. And you find the Texas Education Code listed there, on Chapter 11, Sections 185 and 186. So total will be three goals. One for math, one for reading, and one for college career and military readiness.
There may be some disconnect in your vernacular because what you're describing, we've known, and we've done it for five years. We're so far out ahead of HB3 that what you're discussing is something that we've done as part of our strategic action plan since 2015.
Yes.
And then the second thing is, the goal in our format is sort of this overarching theme. It's very thematic. And what you're calling goals, we call targets. And then what the board does is they look at, for example, high academic achievement. Goal number one in our system would be almost exclusively based on how students perform on STAR and EOC.
Yes.
This board and this team has all but dismissed approaching grade level. What we're focusing on is meeting the grade level or mastering the grade level.
Yes.
In terms of our subpops, we have poor children, as many people do. And we have English learners, and then we've got the highest percent of special education students in the region because the districts are under reputation for being very responsive to the needs of special education students. And what we typically do is we go right down the list under this umbrella of STAR EOC. And we have indicators that would suggest that their expectation is that we continue and improve academic achievement and literacy for third graders. Improve math for third graders, writing for fourth graders, the number of eighth graders that taken past algebra. So it'll go probably, I think it has 12 targets under that umbrella.
Yes.
And then what we're going to reintroduce later is that now there's a second umbrella that is also academic in nature, but it focuses on your CCMR. And that's interest from this group that says STAR and EOC are important. They're in compliance with HB3, but we want to see progress in terms of SATs, ACT, TSI, dual credit courses, performance at early college high schools. Those are the indicators that speak more to making sure that when they leave us, they and their parents are not disappointed we haven't done a disservice to them by making them believe that paying that tuition money and sending the child off to another state or to a university that cost them money or scholarships or loans wasn't misguided because we've known all along that they were fine with STAR EOC, but they never really demonstrated in the area of CCMR that they were gonna be okay after they left us. And so we're concerned with what their performance looks like when they're with us. But as part of like what everybody said, we understand that our role is to make sure that they have a better quality of life, that the economic prosperity that they achieve is higher than what their parents may have achieved because as parents, we all want that for our children. And then something that's become more important, and that is that we want them to be socially and civically responsible people. And that's handled in a fourth goal. And then in between, we're all committed to having a great culture and a climate in the district, so we call that our people. And then, of course, like any other large corporation, and we're probably the fourth largest in the city with a $430 million a year budget, operating budget, we need to be fiscally responsible and be very intentional in terms of whatever those goals are. If the money being directed to the organization isn't touching one of those four or five or whatever we arrive at, then that money shouldn't be spent.
Right. Right. And as we continue, I do have your 2015 board goals and your 2020 vision goals. So we will see the alignment of what HB3 is asking and what you've already had in place that is expiring in 2020. So we're not going to start from scratch. We will make connections to what you already have.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other questions? So what, um, these early childhood, so we have the goals for early childhood literacy and math. Okay, and that is going to be evaluated by the time our students get to third grade. So in third grade, how are they doing in reading, how are they doing in math? Those will be the goals that you are going to be adopting, you're gonna develop and you're going to adopt. Within those goals, then we're gonna have what we call goal progress measures. And part of those goal progress measures, for example, for third grade, will be how are our students doing in kinder, first grade, and second grade. Um, as other boards have been engaging in this process, they found out that, uh, when they do a comprehensive needs assessment, they have students coming into kinder that already have, uh, gaps, uh, big gaps that they need to focus and close, um, to make sure that they're successful. So as you engage in this development of the goals, uh, the recommendation is uh, for the superintendent to share with you a, the results of a comprehensive needs assessment, so you can really be targeted on what those goals are going to be about. Once you have that, then you can also come up with your target. What do we want the target to be? Okay, so that would be for-
Can you back up to your comprehensive needs assessment, but, and you're talking about on all these target areas, kind of a picture of where we're at? That's something we've already, that, that's something you said we've already-
Perfect.
And we're at a point where we've had all the stakeholder groups the last probably two months. Students, administrators, teachers, the association, teachers' association, parents participate in a process to reconsider the two thousand fifteen goals and targets and to determine whether or not uh, they'd like to amend, modify, delete, add. And later on tonight, they'll get a chance to see kind of where they landed, but of course, they get a voice in it too.
Yeah.
And if we need to add a goal or a target, um, the board has a role in that. So I don't know how we arrived at sort of reading the commissioner's mind.
In my opinion, uh, in fifteen, um, I think we have the vision and foresight of, of nitpicking of the things that were important in order to assist the children early. And so consequently, this falls right in line with what is evolved in HB three. So in many ways, we, we can be proud of ourselves being here for the curve, but now we have to work within the confines of
We're kind of like, where do we go from here? Where do we build?
Yes, uh, and we do have, uh, that room for improvement and room to build. So as you're thinking about your goals, uh, one of the things is that you need to set specific quantifiable annual goals for the five-year goals. So, uh, with HB three, we're saying that your deadline is going to be five years, just like how you have with your twenty fifteen board goals, your target was, uh, tw- five years, right, twenty twenty? So continuing with that five-year target, uh, and then with your goals though, they need to be what we call smart goal. They need to be specific. Um, you know what the M stands for?
Measurable.
Measurable, the A? Attainable, you got it? I'm, I'm not, I'm just pressing you right now. Realistic.
Well, I'm not that smart, isn't it good?
Yes, you are. And the T, where would the T be?
Tangible.
Uh, tangible or time-bound, okay, so that time-bound would be the target, okay? So as you're coming up with those goals, uh, that's one of the requirements. And then also because of HB three, you need to post an annual report, uh, on the district and your campus websites as well. Yay, perfect.
And the state is gonna continue to, I assume, publish the taper
Yes.
For each of, and they have a lot of that data.
So, um, as we're thinking about your early childhood literacy and math and your CCMR, uh, that's gonna be your annual goals, okay, uh, for growth in third grade, so we're assessing third grade, but we're figuring out how our students are doing in the lower grade levels, and then the same thing for college career and military readiness. We're looking at that readiness in, uh, the readiness indicators under your student achievement domain. Uh, we also want to have what we call annual targets. So for example, if your goal is go, if the target will be twenty twenty-five, we don't wanna wait until twenty twenty-five to see if we met it. We want to be able to verify each year, are we on target? And if we're not, then hey superintendent, what is the plan to get us on target? If we are on target, then you know, time to celebrate, uh, with your community, with your stakeholders, because you are moving towards a direction that you want your students to go. Um, and then for your early childhood literacy and math, so there's two, uh, additional bullets there. One will be that, uh, you will be identifying teachers that need that support, uh, in kinder through third grade to help with, uh, literacy. And then also, uh, to help meet the needs of, the unique needs of our English learners and our special lets, our students receiving special ed. So there needs to be targeted professional development for them. Um, and then, uh, you can also set up annual targets, uh, for your bilingual or your ESL students. Okay, depending on the needs of your district. So, uh, you mentioned earlier that you've already gone out to the community, that you engage your stakeholders, uh, to figure out how you're moving in with this plan. So that's great, because that is one of those, uh, requirements for, uh, HB three. You represent the community, but you also want feedback from your community. So as you come up with these goals, sharing those goals, sharing those targets, uh, of what the focus is going to be. So there's four things, uh, that we have on that slide. The first one is going to be goal setting, so developing how many goals?
Three.
Three goals, and what do those three goals need to be about?
Literacy, math, and CCMR.
Good, so setting up your three goals, once you come up with your three goals, then engage in the stake, uh, holder, uh, stake, engagement stakeholders, you know, get the feedback from your stakeholders as far as those targets. So earlier we talked about, you know, do we want a hundred percent of our third graders being at the mid-grade level? Or are we okay with the seventy-five or the sixty percent? Um, you, I believe your data says that you are above the, or you are in that sixty percent of mid. So that is what HB three is requiring, sixty percent at that, um, mid's level. But you can very well say, we want our students, you know, we want seventy-five or eighty percent of our students to be at the master's level. Sixty percentage is a suggestion, not all of our districts are at sixty percent like yours. But based on your comprehensive needs results, based on the community engagement, you can increase the percentage, or you can also increase the performance level. Not stay at the mid, but you can go to the masters. Uh, and then that annual report that we were talking about. So one thing that we, uh, that HB three is also requiring is that the board engages in, uh, monitoring the progress of these goals. Like I mentioned, you know how we have the annual targets, so we don't wanna wait, you know, you don't wanna set them now and then forget about them or not talk about those goals until twenty twenty-one, in one year. You want to talk about the progress of those goals, um, the recommendation is at least four times per year, but if HB three is just asking you for one. Um, but what can happen if we don't keep track of our goals? Like if I wanna lose weight, then I'm like, ah, I wanna lose wa- you know, I wanna lose ten pounds in one year. And I'm not gonna be, you know, I'm not gonna weigh myself until that year happens. Is that gonna help me meet my goal? No, what should be the thing that I should be doing?
Consistently weighing yourself?
Yeah, and do I, do I do it every day?
Not every day.
Not every day, right? But come, maybe once a week, or maybe once every two weeks, just to make sure that I'm staying, uh, see if I'm on target or if I'm way off. Uh, so the same thing happens with our goals. We want to have the conversation of how are our students doing when it comes to meeting those goals, okay? Uh, so, uh, let's just engage in a quick activity. As we're coming up with those goals, or you develop those goals, we need to have a clear understanding of what inputs, outputs, outcomes, and student outcome goals are. So I'm sure that you're gonna be able to do this like super quick. What I would like for us to do, we're gonna stand up, and I have two tables, so if we can form two groups of four. Once you find your group, you're gonna have, uh, at the top, four index cards. One will be inputs, another will, one will say outputs, outcomes, and student outcome goals. With your team, um, figure out where the index cards at the bottom will go, and then we'll have a conversation, okay? So pick your team, go to a table, four per table. Uh, figure out where those index cards at the bottom go, which ones are samples of inputs, outputs, outcomes, and student outcome goals.
You're with us, Mike, you're stuck with us, let's go.
You can talk.
Might be, is that input or is that?
And what's it gonna be the output as a result of that?
That's more final over there. So I would do these six-week assessments, because those are formative assessments as a form of an outcome. And then teacher retention should be the reason, should be an outcome of being competitive in terms of Well, it's a student outcome goals.
Maybe just an outcome. No, there should be an output, shouldn't it?
Or is it the outcome, so, no, yeah, the, the outcome, the, the financial update?
There you go, you're right, yeah, and then the balance budget would be the outcome.
Okay, teacher retention, would that be not, that would be not going to, wouldn't it?
That's not a student outcome, is it?
Yeah? If you're doing these things, you're doing the preparation. We don't know where to put our students. Is it equal amount for each one?
This is a matter of semantics, either these are all
All right, we got thirty seconds.
Outputs, and these are all outcomes, or these are 'cause these are all formative. Things that y'all need to review. Benchmarks, balance, budget, annual audit, this is yearly, yearly, yearly. And then this is tied to this.
We actually wanna get an A.
You guys are done, and they're still debating. They're, they're still reviewing.
They can overthink things.
Okay, so let's see how we did, okay, if we can just go ahead and form, uh, circle around, or you know, over here and together. So let's talk about, where should we start? Do you wanna start with input, or do you wanna start with student outcome goals?
We have to put inputs to get to the student outcome goals.
Okay, so let's talk about inputs. Uh, who wants to share with us, uh, let's start over here, because you guys have the advantage of having your superintendent. As they're sharing their inputs, then I'm gonna ask this group to review, and then we'll talk, if there are differences, we'll talk about those. Go ahead, Dr. Delatorre.
So we interpreted inputs to be the investment. The buses, the laptops, the budget, the teachers, and students. This is our reality.
Yeah, inputs is what we know at the beginning of the school year, right? Do we have, do we have a different one?
Just benchmarks.
Just benchmarks.
Okay, so benchmarks, all right, so benchmarks, do we know those about benchmarks, or the results of the benchmarks at the beginning of the school year?
To me, it's kind of how you think about it, though, if you know what the benchmarks are. I mean, that's not saying that we know what they're gonna turn out to be. But you're just saying, this is what the benchmarks are, yeah, you would know that part. So to me, I'm interpreting, making an interpretation of it.
Yeah, and there is times when we might use like benchmarks, or we can use, um, star results at the beginning, right of the cycle, because that is going to help us with, what are we going to do for our students for that school year? Okay, um, for this activity, I like how you were, you know, thinking outside the box. For this activity though, we're going to just be focusing on, we're gonna use benchmarks on another section. Okay, but, uh, as we're thinking about inputs, inputs are that's
You're, you're back to subjectivity.
And your interpretation is, your interpretation is correct.
That's my whole bit with HB three, there's a lot of subjectivity.
So, I know, um, so the inputs, what we know at the beginning of the cycle, at the beginning of our school year. Let's talk about outputs. We're gonna start with this group. Who wants to lead us through the outputs?
We have the annual audit. Six weeks assessments, monthly attendance reports, monthly discipline rates, and, uh, financial updates.
Okay, did you, this team have anything different?
A lot of things, yeah.
A little bit.
Yeah. Outputs and outcomes, so we're right either way. But either all of these belong in this row, and all of these belong in this row. Again, it's just, uh, something may have been lost in translation. So if you'll notice, everything here is sort of an annual it happens annually. All of this is what I'd call progress monitoring.
Yes.
Maybe we should put benchmarks.
So I don't know if the outcomes is the, I think the outputs are that if they're doing this, and the board is getting financial updates, uh, every quarter. Uh, the educators are getting six-week assessments every six weeks. We're looking at monthly discipline rates, and monthly attendance reports for both the teachers and the students. It gives us an idea of how our investment seems to be moving.
Yes. Yeah, and that's a perfect definition. As we're thinking about our outputs, outputs is how are we going to measure?
I disagree.
I think we need to evaluate, uh, what you said.
I was waiting for that.
Yeah, so outputs is the way that we measure throughout the cycle. Uh, ways for us to measure, uh, the strategies that we're implementing, uh, we don't, we're not waiting until the end of the year, but how are we doing? So like, for example, your financial updates, is a financial update, uh, what is a financial update?
He's the only one that reads it.
Water.
That's the way I do it at home.
Yeah, so it's not like your final, uh, report, right? It's just giving you, it's just telling you, giving you a heads up, hey, this is how much water we've spent, this is how much money we have. When it comes to your monthly discipline rates, every month, reviewing how our students are doing when it comes to that discipline. Uh, the same thing with your attendance reports, those are monthly, it's not like the final attendance, right, it's just every month. The, we have over here the annual audit. Is the annual audit, do you get annual audits every six weeks? Not if it's the annual, right?
It's gonna be a yearly thing if it's an annual audit.
So if it's an annual audit, then we refer to that as an outcome. The outcome is at the end of the cycle, at the end of the school year. We're not able to review those as we go through the cycle, the outcome is what happens at the end. So what will be some examples of outcomes? We'll start over here.
I'm gonna keep this very general.
Okay.
Just for illustrative purposes. If you're doing a loss of credit audit.
Oh, my lord.
It's probably good to do it consistently throughout the year, rather than wait until the end of the year. Because
After they graduate.
If they've already graduated, it's like a post-mortem autopsy, right? So it's important that that happen periodically.
Yes.
And not that anyone would do that, and wait till the end of the year. But a, a best practice might be on a regular and continuous basis during the actual year.
We're gonna do that now for sure.
So as we're thinking about outcomes, what are some examples of? What are some examples of outcomes, we'll start over here. So you have the annual audit, right, that's at the end of the year.
Graduations, teacher.
At the end of the year.
Retention, uh, balanced budget, and test scores.
And test scores, all of those happen at the end of the school year, right? As we're thinking about outcomes, we have two types of outcomes, we have what we call student outcomes, and then just other outcomes. Yeah, we have business outcomes, and we have student outcomes. Now, what we want us to focus on today is that student outcome goals. Before, uh, we had this activity, we had, we talked about the goals being SMART, right, specific, measurable, attainable. So that was kind of like a hint, cause if you notice, um, where do you find most of the text on each of those index cards? On which column? And the student outcome goals, right, cause if you read every one of those, you're gonna find that those are SMART. So, um. I just wanted us to engage in this activity, to have that clear understanding of, what are we talking about when it's inputs, and that's known at the beginning? What are we talking about when we are talking about outputs, that's a way to measure during the cycle. And then our outcomes that happens at the end, okay? High five your team, say great job team, and let's go back to our table.
By now you've, I'm sure, realized we're kind of GT.
You are. You are, I just didn't hear a lot of that positive reinforcement with great job. It is. Okay, so, um, you already know this, this is gonna be a review. You need your SMART goals, they need to be measurable, we need to have five year, um, target goals. With those annual, uh, targets as well, for every student outcome goal. Uh, you, uh, for every goal, we need to make sure that it has a baseline, uh, which means the current state. Where are we, where are our students right now, what is our performance? You need a target, um, according to HB three, and what you have done, what should the target be? What should the target be, uh, when you're coming up with those goals? Is it gonna be in three years, in two years? Five years, right, so the target should be five years from the time that you start, uh, implementing your goals. And then, um, that's gonna be our deadline, and, uh, we need to have progress measures. So you will come up with your goals, you will say, this is where we wanna be in reading, in math, and CCMR. Your superintendent will come up with goal progress measures, which is what you call, uh. Targets, okay, so we're, we're talking about the same lingo. Um, this is an example of a board outcome goal, and this is the goal that addresses early childhood literacy. May I have a volunteer to read the goal, please?
The percent of third grade students that score meets grade level or above on star reading will increase from forty-one percent in two thousand nineteen. To fifty-five percent by June two thousand twenty-four.
So what is my population?
Your third grade students.
Third grade students, uh, do I have a baseline? What is my baseline?
Forty-three percent.
My baseline, according to the goal?
Fifty percent.
Forty-one percent.
Forty-one percent, uh, forty-one percent. Do I have a target?
Fifty-five percent?
Fifty-five percent, and it's telling me by June twenty twenty-four, right, the, my deadline. Uh, what, uh, am I using to measure?
The star reading?
The star reading, okay, so when you come up with your goal, your goal should have that population, baseline, target. The deadline, and what you're using to measure, our goals should look like this. Why do you think it is important to have a baseline, why should we have a deadline? Uh, why should we include the way that we're measuring?
You gotta find out where you're at, we know where you're going.
Yeah, we need to figure out where we're at, so that's gonna be the baseline, right, the baseline will let us know where we're at. That would be another reason.
Has to be measured in time, so you have to have a deadline as to when, if anything, just say twenty years from now, we'll get there.
Yeah, if I don't have a deadline, it could be, well, you know, this is our target, this is where we wanna go, but hey, how long ago did we come up with those targets? Right, with, with, uh, the target that we want, so be in specific as far as by when do we want to accomplish that. Now, I share with you the information about the annual targets, so on that table, that's where we have those yearly targets for that goal. Um, we started with forty-one percent in twenty nineteen, and then we have the annual target for twenty twenty. Annual target for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. Do you see that?
So, do you suggest three percent for whatever our goals might be, is a reasonable target per year?
That is going to depend on your data, uh, and the trend, uh, where have we been in the past, and where do you wanna go? So, as we're talking about these student outcome goals, you will develop them, you're gonna take ownership of those goals as a board. But your superintendent is going to be working with you, okay?
Are you familiar where we've been?
Yeah, um, in two thousand nineteen, according to the taper, and that's at the meets or the approaches of?
These are not your goals, these are just your, an example, yeah.
I know it's an example. They asked what, what we look like, so we would be using forty-eight percent. In two thousand nine as a starting point or a baseline.
Two thousand nine?
Nine?
Nineteen.
Twenty.
Nineteen, and they, they're going to try and move the needle about fifteen percentage points. They've divided fifteen by, by five, so they've ended up with a three percent annual increase. Um, fifteen percent for us would mean.
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three percent, that again would be about a three percent increase, the only thing I would. Offer, not caution us, is that the higher you get. The harder it becomes, the more challenging it becomes, and so if you start really low, you should expect to make significant gains, cause any small adjustment. Should result in a bigger impact. As you start playing like, you know, Acuna and Sylvia and Don do in algebra, and they're in the ninety-ones and, and ninety-fours. There's just, there's very little room. So we typically change the language from increase to maintain, so at those schools, they will always maintain at least a ninety percent. And this is at the approaches level, a ninety percent, so there's no slippage. And then we start looking at the meets and the masters as an opportunity to have support.
That gives, it gives you a good base, uh, for those that are not attaining.
You don't ever wanna, I think, under, um, I mean, make it so easy that it doesn't create the sense of urgency with your principals and your teachers. But you also don't wanna frustrate and discourage everybody out there when they look at something and go, like you said, that's not attainable. Because, like you said, they know their kids better than we do, they know the leadership better than we do, they know the environment they're working in, they know how stressed they are. And the most important thing is, they knew how much work it took to get to where they got now. And sometimes if you say, we gotta move it up another ten, twelve, fifteen percent, it's kinda like, like, I've given you everything in the tank. I, I, I don't know how I can get you ten percentage points more. And in a grade level, just so you, in our, typically in our grade levels, we're like, ta- talking about thirty-two hundred, uh, thirty-five hundred students per grade level. So that means you'd have to. You'd have to help three hundred and twenty more students next year. Perform at the meets if you wanted to have a ten percent increase. Alright, so sometimes we, you know what I mean? So, that's how many students it takes to move every ten percent.
Do we have a way to track, like when we started at kindergarten? They all go all the way to the third grade that we know, that are the students that.
We will now. The, uh, the tricky part was that there were no assessments for pre-K one or two, they start at three. But this year, Brenda, Dr. Chacon, is creating an assessment to measure first, whether or not full day pre-K. Is worth the investment that the state has made, so we're, we're planning on seeing a much better prepared. Pre-K student when they come into kindergarten, and then we wanna assess them. To see, and not wait till they get to the third grade, to see whether or not they're making the kind of progress that would allow us to have a hundred percent of the students. At minimum, at third grade, reading at grade level, or what we refer to as the meets, the standard expectation.
So, as we're talking about these goals, another thing that must be done is that we need to include annual targets for our subgroups. So, depending on, uh, and I'm sure you have probably representation on most of your subgroups.
There's three.
Uh, on three, okay, so when we, whatever we have twenty-five students or more at the district level, then that's where, uh, we need to keep track. So more than likely, you're gonna have your economically disadvantaged, uh, you will have your EL population, maybe your SPED, um, as well. So, your superintendent will then come up with annual targets that will help move the needle for your goal as well. So earlier there were the discussion of how do we keep track of our students, and how do we support them? This is using this tool, that's how you are going to be able to see how we're moving, um, towards that track, or are our students moving or not, okay? Uh, so, let's take a look at, if you can go ahead and grab one and pass the rest. So, this is aligned to HB three, as you continue to work on the development of your student outcome goals. These are just some things, uh, reminders for you to keep in mind, um, as you engage in this work. We're gonna start from left to right, uh, so, uh, where we have that does not meet focus. At the top, it should be vision one on page sixteen. Is everybody there? Okay, uh, you have some highlighters there, so if you wanna highlight, just so you can remember, um, that you have all of these things. Uh, being part of your goal. So, on that first column, that first column just talks about how the board does not have a vision. Uh, the board does not have goals, and the board does not consistently distinguish between inputs, outputs, and outcomes. We've just gone through that activity of input, output, outcomes, so we engage in that. Uh, and as we're talking about the vision, um, there's been many times when the board does not take ownership of the vision. And they have administration take care of it, and then the board just approves it, right? Um, but, uh, what this talks about is, the board, because you represent the vision and the values of your community. It should be you engaging in that development of the vision, because your goals will be aligned, um, to that vision. So, under preparing to focus, that second column, um. If you can, if someone can read for me the second descriptor under preparing to focus, second descriptor.
The board is preparing to focus if all of the following conditions are true?
Uh, on page, uh, sixteen, preparing to focus, second bullet.
You, you were in the right column, but just a second bullet point. Own the vision development process while working collaboratively with the superintendent.
Okay, so, you do own the vision, uh, but doesn't mean that you're gonna leave your superintendent out of it, it's just working collaboratively with him. Your next descriptor, may I have another volunteer for the third descriptor?
Adopt three to five goals.
Okay, so if you can go ahead and highlight that, uh, you know, we want our boards to adopt between three to five goals. Research says that when we adopt, um, you know, between three to five goals, uh, that we'll be able to meet those three or five goals. If we have between six to eleven goals, uh, how many goals do you think we'll be able to meet?
Three to five.
Uh, when we have more than six, it would be about zero, uh, of those goals. Because our focus is not, uh, where it needs to be, so the more goals you have, uh, the less focus you're gonna have. That is why they're recommending between those three to five goals, okay? Uh, and then, uh, last descriptor, please, so if you can go ahead and highlight, uh, the third descriptor, adopted between three to five goals. And then may I have a volunteer for the last descriptor?
Own the goal development process while working collaboratively with the superintendent.
If you can go ahead and highlight that, so you as a board, own the development of your goals. But you are going to work collaboratively with your superintendent. As we move to approaches focus, um, your goals should be specific. It should be student outcome goals, if you can go ahead and highlight student outcome goals. So when we're talking about student outcome goals, that's what students know or are able to do. It needs to have a population. If you can go ahead and highlight population, five-year deadline, your baseline, and your annual targets, those are required by HB three. Um, as we look at the meet focus, uh, on the second, uh, the first and second descriptor. Uh, Dr. De La Torre talked about this, where we want to set goals that are challenging, but are not going to discourage, um, your community, your stakeholders, your students. Okay, as you're coming up with those goals, we want to make sure that those are influenceable by the superintendent. He has influence, uh, over those goals that you, um, are trying to achieve. And then we talked about the last bullet, uh, coming up with your goals based on a comprehensive assessment results, not just based on. Whatever you want the focus to be.
Can you explain what that second bullet means?
Uh, require adult behavior change, so what is the definition of insanity?
And the same thing over and over, expecting different results.
Expecting different results, right, so we can say, oh, we want to, you know, make sure that our students are successful, and this is gonna be the target. Yet, our behavior as adults stays the same, if it stays the same, will we be able to make those changes? More than likely, no. So as we're talking about require adult behavior change is, maybe as a teacher, how am I going to change my practices? As a principal, what systems am I going to put in place to make sure that we get to that ninety-five, or, you know, whatever target you, uh. Decide that you wanna come up with. Alright, so, um. Let's go to then, uh, the board, uh, the goal progress measures. So, once you come up with your goals, your superintendent will come up with goal progress measures, uh, and let's take a look, just a quick look. At, um, your twenty-twenty. Vision goals, so if you can grab one and pass the rest.
Do you have one more?
They're coming around. So you have one, uh, like Dr. De La Torre mentioned before, you have one that talks about academics, right, student performance. Uh, and you have YISD will increase student performance in all assessed areas to ensure that all students are provided. The opportunity to graduate college and career ready. Uh, and then you have, uh, those performance indicators. So, if we were to look, if we were to take a look at that YISD will increase student performance, would that align to, uh, that being a SMART goal?
No, cause it doesn't have the baselines of everything, and it doesn't have a, a timestamp on it, as far as when it should be accomplished by.
Mm-hmm, we just know that we want to make sure that our students, uh, have that high performance, right? But then you have your indicators, and that's where you have, like, increase the number of EL students meeting or exceeding the standard in ELAR. Uh, by ten percent, you have increase the number of SPED students. So as you take a look, let's take a look at the first one, increase the number of ELL students. Meeting or exceeding standard in English Language Arts reading by two, uh, ten percent. Do we have a population? Who's my population?
ELL students.
Our ELLs, uh, do we have a baseline? Not on that one, do we have a target? So that's just telling me that it's going to be, uh. Uh, by ten, the number students meeting, okay, yeah, so the target is meet, uh, or exceed the ten percent. Do I have a deadline?
With the twenty-twenty vision, yeah.
Twenty-twenty.
With a twenty-twenty, right, but then I will have to make sure that I'm looking at that document, right?
Every year.
Every year, uh-huh. Yeah, I don't have my annual targets, right, so we're just saying, we wanna attain that ten percent in those five years. But then, is there a way for us to measure, are we getting there or not? Uh, let's take a look at the last one. Uh, increase the number of eighth grade students meeting standard on Algebra One EOC by ten percent. Base, uh, population? Eighth grade students, uh, baseline? No baseline, uh, target?
Ten percent.
And with that ten percent, I, I want to increase it by ten percent, right, but is it really telling me what is going to be the target? I know that I want to increase it by ten, but from where, or to what? Okay, so be a little bit more specific. Uh, and my deadline is going to be the twenty-twenty, right, cause this is your twenty-twenty vision, uh, goals. So, as you come up with your goals, you have, uh, you already have something to work on. We just need to make sure that our goal has.
Now, I think that, um, and, and this does become a, it is a public document, so our, our strategic plan and our, and our goals are tied into our superintendent's. Um, evaluation.
Yes.
And within that document, we do have all of the, that data, so maybe it's just incorporating that data into. If somebody needs a, a summary of what it is that we're doing, something, understand that, if that's what I'm hearing, you're, you're saying.
Yes, when you develop those goals, we need to be very specific, because remember, you're going to be sharing these goals with the community. So as a community member, will I be able to know what was our? So as a community member, will I be able to know what was our starting point? Will I be able to know where we at uh in that specific year? And what is the goal that we're trying to accomplish, okay? Uh, you do have your college, career, and military, uh your CCMR um goal as well. But then we see the same trend as the ones. It will be the last one.
What is this? I'm not even sure what this is.
That was your.
Original one approved April twenty fifteen, so it's from the onset, you got it from the website.
Uh, I got it from uh Ms. Monica.
Yeah, I, it may have just been an outline, because what, what you've described is, is far, far more comprehensive than this.
Yeah, so as you review, just keep, you know, the page sixteen, uh where you highlighted. So once you go back and you finalize that, just ensuring that it meets that uh SMART goals uh requirement, okay? Uh, so um as we move forward, after you adopt them, what should be happening next? After you adopt, then uh what the um suggestion is, is for you to develop a monitoring calendar. So we talked about where we wanna monitor where our, how our students are doing, not just once a year, but maybe four times a year. So adopting that monitoring calendar with a monitoring report, that your superintendent will prepare for you uh with the goal that is being um monitored, the data uh that is available, like you talked about what should the goal be? That will give you data of the trend, like where were you three reporting periods before? What's the current reporting period and then what is your goal?
Can I just ask him this? So, I mean, some of these are, are difficult to do quarterly because of, you're, you're asking him to, to take the benchmarks for each grade level, for each school, combine them and then just, and provide us, like especially, which every district does that anyway. But is that kinda what you're saying as far as like for fourth grade, what was your benchmark that you did for your six weeks, for your nine weeks? Where are your kids now, is that what? Because I mean, obviously, these are EOCs and SPED and STAR, which are at the end of the year.
Yeah, so when we're talking about the goal, that goal will be uh evaluated at the end of the school year, right? But we talked about the goal progress measures. So you're gonna monitor every goal through your goal progress measures. And the goal progress measures will be, will depend on him. What he decides that, whatever tool he's going to use to measure if that goal is being met or not. Uh, some districts are using uh some assessment, release assessments. Uh, some districts are using uh benchmarks or unit, um not unit assessment, um the, kind of like the begin, end of year, middle of year, end of year uh assessments. So that would depend on him and that will be the data that he's going to give you every quarter to monitor that. So the goal progress measure needs to be predictive of the goal that you um developed, that you create.
What would be the impact to the school that we started doing that?
They do it um once in um late October. Uh, and then they do it again in, right about now, February. Uh, their benchmark assessments, then TEA has helped us, they created uh some progress monitoring assessments that don't take a long time, but give you a, a quick snapshot. And then the, the final assessment is the STAR EOC assessment.
Are those assessment online or is that?
Yeah, the teachers uh, for the students or access to teachers? For the students, yes. The TEA is online, benchmark assessment is online, that's our own assessment. There are, I think, two twelve week assessments, I think is how we describe it. Twelve weeks into the year and then twelve weeks later that lands about February. And then we, our teachers and uh the faculty and staff go hard, because from this point, the next assessment will be the STAR and the EOC. But it does, I think, as Connie was alluding to, I, I think it, it can feel very burdensome and very heavy on teachers, because as you can imagine, if their students aren't performing.
Students too, because some kids take these tests so badly. I mean, some kids um are just, are just oh, I, all I can say is my oldest son would come home every time they were getting ready to have a, have a, and the back then it was what, the, I don't remember, the one was? Tax, I think it was tax. It might have been the, I think it might have been the one before tax, actually. But he'd come home and he'd just, and he was like fourth or fifth grade and he'd just come home and go straight to his room. And I knew that was the sign, he's getting ready to take the test, because and then I just have to go in there and, what's wrong? We're doing the test.
And just because of time, so um this is not about testing our students more.
Yeah, it's about the data, reviewing the data that we have, that is being, that we already have, and just presenting it, just to give us a, a snapshot of where we're at as we go along the process, kind of to be in line with the teachers.
I'm sorry, I mean, you know, but the, the only thing I, I would caution us is that, you know, they get these snapshots and, and they develop sense of urgency. You know, especially if we're not performing at a particular school or whatever. And sometimes the, from the time that they, they have that snapshot to the time to the next round testing, they've made significant improvements and adjustments and that sort of thing, and so.
It could be an average though, no, of where we're at entirely as a district, we don't need to break it down by learning community per se.
No, 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 but I'm, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that we just gotta be careful when, when we get the data and not make ourselves crazy about it, you know? I had, I had a, an AP had me a, a document at a recent visit and I'd never seen that document before. But based on that, you know, I was two seconds away from telling him, we need to go meet right now. You know, I was really unhappy about it, you know? But, but um, you know, we just gotta be careful, cuz you can't take, you can't take one data point and, 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 you know, plan your life around it, you know?
The thing is that it's how it's interpreted, not only at, at upper level, but how it's interpreted at the, the school level and all that. Even though we say it's just a snapshot and some people take it like it's, you know, and they come down hard on the, on all the.
Well, the conversations I've had with, with, with my people, uh not all of them, but repeatedly, there's a lot of stress on our children. And so when you look at, yeah, you say the snapshot, then that's fine and good. But w- we're dealing with human beings, we're dealing with human beings at a very early stage. And um, uh, uh some human beings just react differently, even into their adulthood in form of test or going to the doctor, you know, on and on. And uh, I agree in principle, but I think there's a human aspect and also that they've moved again. And I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Who owns STAR?
Who, what, I'm sorry?
Who provide, uh the. Who, Pearson or whoever is the person who gets the money. And that's another point.
You don't necessarily have to use STAR. If you have an assessment that you can use district wide that is reliable, then that's the one that you can use. Now, uh you talked about intent, right? So as we're talking about this goal progress monitoring, uh at least four times a year, the intent is not to go and, you know. Right, it is going to be as a board, what can we do to support our teachers and our students? So if we are off track, then as a board, what can we do to bring them back on track? Because we don't wanna wait until the end of the school year to see if we met our goal or not and then do something about it for the following school year. It's kind of like, you know, when you're watching a game, do you watch a game without watching the scoreboard?
Can, can I ask the, that, doesn't that contradict what you said at the very beginning, where you said that he is the educational expert? So if he's giving us a snapshot and then you're telling us, how are we going to fix the schools, because they're not performing where they should be at that snapshot? Aren't we taking his job and saying, you're not doing your job, we're gonna fix it for you? Instead of trusting him as the educational expert to see, he looks at it, he works with his cabinet, he works with his principals, because it is a progress throughout the year and as, as Mr. Sotero said, they're, they're going to grow and some kids will grow at a slower pace than others and we can't overreact and we can't say, your job's not being done right, we're gonna take over and we're gonna decide what to do now.
No, thank you for asking for that clarification. So as he provides you with that monitoring report and that's gonna be uh item three, uh he's going to give you an interpretation of that. So if we're on track, pretty much he's gonna let you know, we're on track, we're doing great, we're gonna continue doing what we're doing. If we are off track, then he's going to explain to you why we are off track and what needs to be done in order to get, in order to get back on track.
Yeah, but that's, that's different than how you worded it at the beginning, I'm just gonna be honest, that was very different.
And I will say one thing, I will say, I say one thing, that the people that he has surrounded himself with are true professions. For me to think that I can go in there and interpret or whatever, um, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in that capacity. So I have to rely on him and the leadership that he selected, because ultimately around, as we sit around this table, there's not one individual here that doesn't put the priority of the child. We're not, we're not, and I see it all the time at TEA, those, those good old boys, the only thing is, just by vision, the only thing they were interested in hiring the next football coach, they're firing, you know, we, we're not that built that way.
Yeah, so when it comes to that monitoring report, he's your educational expert and he's gonna tell you, you know, what needs to be done. You, what you're gonna do, you know, as a board, what can we do? That can either be, you know, uh, uh, uh approving a budget if, if that's the case, or maybe you need to go out and talk to the community about the importance of the parents engaged, you know, whatever. Within your role, how can you support? But I didn't mean you telling him how it's gonna get fixed, because he's your educational expert and he's going to bring those uh suggestions to you.
He's already, you're already getting the stuff from your associate superintendent.
We have a very uh unorthodox, I would say, a unique leadership model. Rarely will you find a superintendent who um, who wouldn't expect board members to come to me if they wanted to meet with an associate superintendent in the academic area or the chief financial officer. And we flip that on its head. A, they're all very comfortable talking about education, because many of them are educators. Second, they go directly to the associate superintendent, the chief financial officer. And I made it their responsibility to make me aware of their meetings with the board, rather than being the funnel and deciding who gets to see who and who doesn't. So I think they're always aware of what's happening at their schools and as I think Ramita's illustrated, when he looked at data that, that caught his attention, he knows exactly where to go to get the answer, if it happens to be a middle school or an elementary school or something's happening at the high school. And that's because of the relationship they have with members of the cabinet and it's also because of the relationship they've developed with the principals at their schools. Cuz one of the things that's really unique about the situation that most superintendents go, my god, how do you do it? Seven comprehensive high schools, seven trustees, seven feeder patterns, no overlap, no at-large. And they do a great job, but it's easy to slip into my principals, my teachers, my kids, my constituents. And so you always have to find a way to bring everybody together. But the, the good, I think the good side of that is it allows them to be very focused on what's happening in their, in their neighborhood. So no, eh, we don't quarrel with anything that you've described, I think we are, like I said, far out ahead of your typical district when it comes to HB three and what HB three requires us to have as part of both our strategic action plan and superintendent's evaluation instrument. And then that evaluation instrument actually is mirrored by the cabinet members' evaluation instrument and by all the principals out there with their own specific data, their own baseline, their own expectations relative to growth over the five-year period, what that will look like every year, broken down by population, subpopulation, um and making sure that they administer their budget in a way that directs the money to the goals. So you've met the eighteen.
It's cuz we're, we're communicating already, I think what, what she's saying to me, check off the box, is to, what we already know, just make that public.
Yeah, just take these and make them smart, that's it.
In the booklet, they're actually.
For the, back to the quarterly, or what was it, three to four times a year, the bulk we've reported, this is where we're at. We, we already do that, but it needs to be publicly in a public meeting setting.
This is not a good reflection of who we are.
We've been doing stuff like this now since that time and it was very specific. It's not just what these things say here.
Yeah, I'm comfortable saying, I agree with that.
Do you all have any questions?
Thank you so much.
Now, it's okay. I'm calling for a fifteen-minute health break, we will return at seven forty-five. Now, well, we can go in there.
So, I owe it all to them. We get a chance now to, as we call it, uh, perform an encore. In other words, do, uh, what we did, uh, the past five years and, uh, be able to improve upon that and continue the work and continued, uh, on this journey of students while maintaining a great, I think, culture and climate in the district where people matter, people are valued, and we demonstrate that value in those relationships every day. What we're going to go over with you is a bit of a template. It's not a finished product. The finished product will look more like this. And the best way to describe it is through this inclusive, I think, very comprehensive process with the help of Dr. Ashberry, who was our neutral third-party facilitator and who met with students, faculty and staff, leadership, district administrators, as well as school site administrators and business civic and community leaders, and basically asked the question, what are your expectations of the district over the next five years? And if you look at it, you'll see that we do have an understanding and a covenant with our community. They really do believe in the same things that you believe in and want us to continue and pursue many of the same goals that we pursued back in 2015. And of course, like you and like me, there's just pressure now to continue and deliver growth even as we be, as we perform higher and higher. So the way it's organized is sort of, the board gets to consider what they've recommended as goals and targets. The goals, there are four, but as you can see on the front page, there is room for two others, and then as the Board of Trustees, you have the authority and the latitude to delete, modify, amend any one of the goals that they've arrived at. On that first page, ultimately, you're the what you expect to see, we're the how. And so the reason it's so thin is because there's no point in putting a big old thick manual, a how-to manual, until we know whether or not the what you want is really what you want. Once you determine that tonight, we'll go back, and what you'll find is a lot of what we do or did the last five years, we simply have to keep doing. And we have to keep doing it with fidelity. So it's not about erasing all of this and coming up with a new blueprint or a new recipe for delivering these results. It's about keeping the ones that have got us to where we're at, maybe modifying, making adjustments. And then if there are some new goals and targets that aren't being addressed by this five-year goal, but become part of this five-year goal, then you can't expect to see a new blueprint or a new what, because it's a new goal with a set of targets, as long as we all understand, as the young lady stated, it's likely where we will have to redirect resources. So the old saying is, if you want to know what's important to a school district, follow the money. Because the money will tell you what, where the priorities are at, the investment will tell you where the priorities are at, and we do that very well. We make sure that we're very intentional and purposeful with where we spend our money. We spend our money on what we all decided was important five years ago, and so we've been able to do some, I think, pretty remarkable things that we don't get a lot of credit for in the media or in the community, but that aren't common. Being able to give raises on the salary schedule every year for six years, maintaining the same health and welfare benefit plan for five, six years with no increase to the employee contribution, securing two 400-plus million-dollar facility bonds from a community that really, for all intents and purposes, is mature enough to have felt like they've done their part. They no longer have kids in our schools in many cases, or grandkids or great-grandkids, yet they're willing to assume a greater property tax burden on behalf of someone else's children because they trust you first and foremost. Just the ability to deliver on the 2015 bond and the great head start we have on the 2019 bond. Lindley working closely with our financial advisor and being able to sell bonds on two separate and distinct occasions that allowed you to be the only board in recent history to give back property tax money. And a lot of people don't know anything or know enough about that. So our goal, when we decided to call this the encore, was to continue and exceed people's expectations and do things that are uncommon and oftentimes the first in the area, and that's what we're committed to do. We've gone back now, and the panels have again taken academic achievement that we had once collapsed into one goal, and they have seen enough difference and distinction to make it two separate goals. The first goal goes back to student performance, will be increased, or will be increased in all assessed academic areas to ensure students continuously improve their mastery of the content needed to be successful and ensure in years. And in talking to Dr. Ashberry and people on the panel, this focuses primarily on STAR and EOC data. It again, to some extent, dismisses the approaches and puts greater emphasis on the needs or the meets' expectations and the masters' expectations. But in terms of the measurements that, that we've arrived at with their help, if you'll turn to Goal One, you'll find that below each one of the goals, there's a little area where I want y'all to feel comfortable writing down any questions, any observations. The team is here. Any one of them, every one of them, can answer any of your questions. 1.1, the district and all campuses will be rated C or better under the new A to F accountability system. That means we need to address that situation we had that afforded us an 89% and cheated us out of an A grade. We think we've put some things in place to make sure that that doesn't happen again. 1.2, increase the percent of EL students rated meets' grade level in English Language Arts reading on STAR EOC exams. Now, if you move to the right, it tells you who the students are that, that we're focused on, and then if you, if you move to the further right, there is the baseline that the young lady was talking about. So at present, one in four students meet, not approaches, one in four student meet. We're, we're hoping that we can climb at least 1% a year for the next five years and get that to 30%. Now, we're trying to find a nice balance. I'd like to see something closer to 33%, 35%. I think it's attainable, but I also don't want, again, the teachers to feel like they're assuming this, this big burden and that they're expected to move the barometer for those kids by 2% every year. I, I will tell you that there's nothing wrong with under-promising and over-delivering. We like to do that. Increase the percent of special education students rated meets' grade level in English Language Arts reading on STAR EOC. We are currently at 25.4, which by the way, is pretty remarkable that your special education students are performing as well as your EL students. And they're not too far behind your general population students at the meets' level. And again, we'd like to see that increase to 30% at minimum over the next five years. Number 1.4, increase the percent of EL students, if I'm going too fast, please stop me. Increase the percent of EL students making progress toward English proficiency as measured by Telpass. That number's 28.6. We'd like to get it to 33% over the next five-year period at minimum. 1.5, increase the percent of third-grade students rated meets' grade level on STAR exams. Here's our general ed or aggregate population. It's at 47.1. We'd like to move reading to 55% at the meets and math from 55 to 65 at the meets. 1.6, increase the percent of seventh-grade students rated meets' grade level in English Language Arts. We are currently at 44. We'd like to be at one in two seventh graders. 1.7, yes?
Real quick question. Are we, I don't see on here writing for seventh grade. Are we going to focus at all on writing in this, or are we just going to focus on...
There's fourth grade writing and seventh grade writing.
So if you also remember, Houseville 3906 eliminated the writing test, and it's now going to be incorporated into all third through eighth grade assessments. So into the reading will be the writing, similar to your EOC, English 1, English 2. They're going to fold the writing into each grade level. So it's no longer just a fourth and seventh grade mandate. It's going to be a third through eighth grade, and it's going to be incorporated into that assessment starting in 2021.
That's good to know. Maybe I should hang out more with the middle school and elementary people. Thank you.
I have a question. Going back to Telpass, is it covering also reading in that area or is it just writing?
So the Telpass progress composite is everything. So it's your listening, reading, speaking, listening, reading, I'm going to say one, writing, all of them together. So that's just the annual progress that all of those on that composite score that every child needs to make.
Okay. And if you think we're being too bold or not bold enough, we won't take exception. We want to be bold. We want to be aggressive. We want it to be realistic, but we tend to thrive off the challenge. Increase the percent of eighth-grade students at the meets' grade level on STAR exam. In reading, as we pointed out, we're about 47%. Math, 52%. Social studies, for whatever reason, at least in this region, has been elusive. It has been elusive. We're going to try and crack that code, as I said, when we get a chance. If you agree to the goals and the targets, we'll start dropping in how we believe or what we believe we can do and how we can do it over the next five years to increase. In other words, we'll put in the strategies. Enroll at least 30% of eighth-grade students in Algebra 1. We're at 27.8. If we can get that to 30%, that means that almost one in every three eighth graders are taking algebra before they get to high school, and that's a great indicator of college readiness.
I just wanted to ask, what's the growth rate from the, for the last few years on that area?
The trend?
Uh huh.
Do you have a copy of where we started in 2015?
Started at 10. Of eighth graders enrolled in algebra.
That's right.
You need to get it on the mic.
We started 18% in 2015, eighth graders enrolled in algebra. And so we are now at 27%.
Okay. That's good. So...
So...
So we have a healthy growth rate, but we still got a lot of ways to go.
Yeah, almost a 10-point growth rate and maintain at least 90% of eighth-grade students with a rating of meets' level on Algebra 1. Right now, it's 91%. We just want to make sure we maintain 90 or better moving forward. No slippage. Increase the percent of students rated meets' grade level on Algebra 1 EOC. We are at 84. We want to get to 90. Increase the percent, that's all students, yeah, both eighth-grade students and, and students in high school. Increase the percent of students rated meets' grade level on STAR EOC in any subject. The 47.4 average that we currently have on the STAR test will become a 55. The 65% on the EOC will become a 70. Increase the percent of students rated masters' grade level on STAR EOC. We currently sit at 21% or about one in five on STAR. We want that to move to 30, and about one in four on EOC, we want to move that to 30 as well. 1.13, increase the percent of students achieving growth as measured on STAR EOC, again, from 68 to 75, from 72 to 80. And then increase the percent of students achieving growth in third grade, spelling, I think there's an R missing there, whoever's helping me with this, as measured by the change in Domain 1 performance, from 51.8 to 55. Goal two, I think, is our continued commitment to have the kind of relationships, to provide the kind of culture, climate and environment throughout the district where everyone feels like they are well-respected. We've relied on the Studer surveys, and we've always committed to maintaining at least a four on the five-point Likert-like scale. That remained the same. The first is the Employee Engagement Survey. The baseline was four. The target remains to be four. It's the equivalent of 80% of the people believe that we're, we're meeting expectations as employees in this district. 2.2 speaks to District Support Services. That's when the schools get to evaluate how they believe the departments here at the central office and at our satellite sites are supporting their work at the school. Again, we want to maintain at least 4.0. We typically average around 4.4, 4.43, I think, has been the score on a couple of occasions. The Parent Satisfaction Survey, which is obviously very important to all of us, is at 4.38. We want to maintain the four, but the 4.38, I think, is very encouraging. Here are some new ones. The number of district-level grievances will remain below one-half of 1% of the total staff population. Y'all probably haven't thought about this, but it's been a long time since this Board of Trustees has had a grievance come before you from the associations. In the year prior to my arrival, we spent $1.5 million on grievances and litigation because of the acrimonious relationship that the association and the organization had at the time. And I'd even become so spoilt because I didn't realize it until we were talking about other ways that we can demonstrate that we have a good relationship internally as a district and externally as our community's district of choice, including relationship with employees. And YTA isn't the only association. There are four others, so we haven't received grievances here at the, at the board level from any of them. And part of that is the relationship. The other part of it is that we try to resolve problems at the, at the lowest level possible. We don't take a position of authority or the being somewhat superordinate and treat people like they're the subordinate. We work together. We don't always agree on everything, but we always agree to try and problem-solve and think critically to avoid having issues escalate and have to come before the board, which puts the board, I think, in a, in a difficult situation sometimes. Haven't done it for six years and hope to continue not to do it. Entry-level educator salary will remain in the top 20% of all comparable districts in Region 19. This is important because we've been very strategic, yes, very deliberate with our resources, but we always have to consider that there are some things that are outside of our control that could potentially happen in the next five years at Austin. And what I'm referring to is their ability to sustain those resources that they committed last year over a five-year period. And in, in the event that they can't do that, our commitment to you and our commitment to the organization is regardless of what happens, you will always be in that top quintile, that top 20% when it comes to compensation, whether we're talking about entry-level compensation, mid-range compensation, and final compensation. There may come a time when you're not the top, but you will always be among the top when you take the region into consideration. I think we can all but guarantee that.
I have a, I'm sorry, I have a question, but, and this is late. I'd like to go back to the, the... I'd like to go back to the, the, um, yeah, the academics, our growth. I know one of the things that our facilitator had talked about is our early education. And I don't think that we have anything stated here that really kind of encompasses that. Do we, do we need to have some sort of goal that encompasses our pre-K or our?
No, when she's referring to early education, it's third grade.
Third grade, so.
So what you'll get, part of that is, sorry.
Third grade.
I thought, I thought the pre-K was involved in this thing.
Well.
Go ahead.
What the, the state is doing is they've invested all of this money in full-day pre-K. And then they've also invested a lot of money in the reading academies. And their expectation is that when they take that test in the third grade, it will demonstrate that their return on investment is significant. In other words, that'll be the first time that the state takes a look at what kind of impact or influence that investment had based on third-grade reading scores. So if you put together a plan, a five-year plan like this, for the first couple of years, that bubble of students that are currently being exposed to full-day kindergarten won't land in the third grade. But when they do land, as Mike said today, Commissioner Murath, he expects to see a significant spike, especially around literacy.
Does it make any sense to go ahead and put some sort of goal in place to, to measure some of those lower pre-K kindergarten, first grade? And I'm not talking about testing because as a kindergarten educator myself, that's, yeah, and it's, it's really, it doesn't really give you a true picture of what, what your kids can do. But, and I'm asking the experts here, so.
Brenda's got the answer for you.
So remember, part of Houseville Three for Board Gold Setting is that we also have some measures of progress monitoring. Okay, so the measures of progress monitoring is exactly what you're asking, Ms. Woodruff. It does include pre-K? And that we're looking at the data, since this is the first time that, that data is being processed for a full-day student, we're going to look at what the baseline is. We will bring that to you, and you know how every year we update you on the progress of Vision Twenty Twenty or Vision Twenty Twenty-five? We will bring those to you, how our progress monitoring in the early grades to get to this particular goal. So we will have that data for you, and we'll keep progress measuring. Now, if you want something different than that would be, but we will progress monitor our early literacy pieces.
It's not that it matters to me how we do it, but whether it's showing the community that we are doing it is what I'm trying to say. Maybe it shouldn't be something in our goals here. And I don't even know how to word it, I have no clue.
Ms. Woodruff, I, I know, I think I understand what you're saying, and correct me, but you know, we just went to, to full-day pre-K, and that's something we do really well. We do pre-K well anyways when we're doing half-days, okay? We're, we're going to do well with this, okay? And, and we hear good things about it, you know, at least anecdotally, I hear good things about it. One of the things, I think, just kind of scanning the rest of this is, is, you know, things happen in public ed all the time, okay? You know, I'm reading about a, a major school district in central Texas that was only able to give their employees a one percent pay raise, even though they, they received all this money. And part of their problem is because of recapture and, and other things that are going on. And, and by the way, they're a big urban school district that needs to contract, and they haven't done that yet. And that's hard. So that's number one. But, but I think the, the big thing for us is, is that we do so many things well, and, and we need to tell the story of public ed. We are the model for how things should be done. And if we don't tell that story, I'd like the whole community, I'd like the whole state to know that we have a wonderful pre-K program, but I also want them to know that we have three-year-olds in our schools, you know, that, that, um, that are getting important services, that are preparing them for the future to help be, become better learners and identifying needs early on. And, and we don't do that. And so just because somebody puts up a stupid banner on the side of their building, you know, when we're already there, that doesn't, that doesn't make sense to me, you know? So my, my comment, and here's, here's the speech, so I apologize, I'm going to get in the soapbox, I was going to do it anyways, is that this is bigger than us, okay? Every day, public ed gets beat up because the media doesn't understand it, the public doesn't understand it. And so we need to tell the story, and this is one of those great successes, you know? Do you want a classroom full of three-year-olds? Oh, my God, no, but we have really special people that know how to do this, and we have special people that know how to support them. Same thing with a brand-new group of pre-K or kinderkids? Oh, my gosh, no, but we have really special people that put this together every day, you know? And, and not just, you know, of course, our teachers are just incredible, but we have all these other folks. So I, I think we need to do this, we need, this is one of the stories we need to tell. And we need to tell why we're successful. You know what, this is the trees and forests. We talked about this the other night at, at our other meeting, Mr. President Cruz, Mr. President Choa. And, and this is the trees and forest, because we're so good at doing this, and we've been doing it for so long, we don't realize what a great thing this is, and we need to tell that story. Because I'm tired of hearing about other so-called public ed things, you know, how great they are. We are great, you know, because we get things done. We have a lot of work to do, oh, yeah, all day long, you know? But we need to tell this story, and, and we need to tell the story of our people. The, am I close, Ms. Woodruff?
That's what I'm saying. I, I'd feel like that maybe there should be something mentioned in these goals that, that indicates the progress we're making with our pre-K, our can, well, pre-K kindergarten, first grade, second grade, so that, that we can show that we are, that, that those programs are, you know, on track to make our third grade what it is, you know, better. I don't know, that's just my opinion.
I agree with you.
I just wondered about, so.
There's a couple of ways you can do it. You could, you could make it a target, or the reality is that when we put in, by what means we're going to improve third-grade reading significantly, right? The first place you're going to start is with, we're the only one of the three large school district, districts where Dr. Chacon and her team were able to move from half-day to full-day day one. Both Socorro and EPISD are now getting ready to roll out full-day or? Socorro hasn't done it yet. Now, they are in a different situation, and they don't have the room we have in a declining enrollment district. I don't know whether or not Juan got his all-day pre-K out there yet or whether it's coming. They, I think they both asked for waivers. So one of the things that I, I think is exciting about it, we're a year out ahead of the districts that we typically get compared to, which means that we're going to have a cohort of about twenty-eight hundred third-graders hit that third grade before anyone else hits that third grade. But I think it, what you just described gives us an opportunity to sort of set the stage by kind of explaining underneath where, where we put the strategies in, underneath the third-grade literacy targets, where we were, what we've been able to accomplish, and then those three or four things that are going to make it possible for us to reach that significant increase in third-grade reading scores by two thousand twenty-five. And it will include our work with full-day pre-K. I know that Brenda and her team are internally developing, developing an assessment. Once we get that assessment developed, then we can talk about rolling pre-K scores, kindergarten scores, whatever that looks like, because I think you're right. I think it's far more than a written test. It's going to have to be multiple measures and portfolio and other ways so that in the aggregate, you get an idea of whether or not the child's making progress, because sitting them down to take an assessment is probably going to be somewhat limiting. Let us play with a little when we bring back the, the next draft of this with a lot of the information that, that I'm describing. You tell me if it captures what we want the world to know. And then, yeah, as, as a district, we're aware of the.
Can I just make another comment?
Yes.
On goal two, our people. When I hear the term "our people," I, I hear, I think of our, our, our teachers and our schools, our administrators, something like that. And well, we have the parent satisfaction survey under "our people." I, I don't know, I'm not sure about the right place. The other thing, too, is that along with that, I had the opportunity to attend the parent engagement conference, and, and I guess I've been to two, three, four of those. These are, this is an amazing event, and it was held at Delway Middle School this year. I guess last month, I'm not sure when it was held. And, you know, we had, we had some great parents really engaged. And by the way, some of our parents have challenges in going to these types of events. And guess what? They were out there because they wanted to be there to support their children. They wanted to be better advocates, they just wanted to understand the process of, of how to support their child. And, you know, while I was pleased with everything that I saw, the school should have been overflowing. We should have taken up all the middle school, we should have taken up all the elementary. You know, we should have had people standing in lines for everything. And so I think that, you know, depending on communities and learning communities and, and schools and stuff, that's probably happening to a certain extent. But I, I, I think, and I'm not sure if I want to goal so much, but is that we, we continue to develop methods of outreach for the community, because we want, we want parents involved, we want families involved, we want caretakers involved, and, and if, if we can help parents and, and, you know, talking to, to older caretakers, you know, talking to grandparents who are having, who are raising their grandchildren and going, and, and hearing them telling me, you know, Mr. Ramirez, this is, this is so much different than when my kids went to school. You know, and in some cases, some of these grandparents are much or significantly older. And so the world is different. So I, I don't know, I, I think we need to get more folks involved, I think we need to get more people to our events. And, and I know some of our schools are doing a fabulous job of doing that, but we should be overflowing every time we have a parent thing. You know, it should be like the elementary Christmas programs, you know? We should be overflowing, and people mad at us because we don't have enough seats, you know? That's what we should.
I've been a parent of the district, I was doing the math, which I'm not that great at, but it's probably been about twenty-three years. And, and I can tell you, sometimes as a, as a younger parent, and even, even as we grew into the teenage years, I had a, a difficult time understanding and navigating through the district. So maybe, I, I hear what you're saying, maybe we need to, and, and it's not, it's not a criticism exactly, but I think maybe we do need to, we need to provide some type of, of, I guess, understanding or, or more communication. I, I don't, I don't have the answer there, but, but I do know that as a parent, I didn't understand at all the system. I looked at it as very, you know, this is, this is, well, this is the principle, and then there's myself, and there's the instructor. But I didn't understand the, the whole dynamic. So it's kind of hard to be involved with something when you don't completely understand it. You go and you're there for your kid, your child, but the entire organization is, is a beast to understand at times.
Put that on. It is, and, and, like I said, I, I, I believe we're doing that to a certain extent. But I'm not sure, you know, if we need to measure, but I, I think that's one of those areas where we need to be better. And I'm not sure how we do that, and, and, you know, and, and Dr. Lotory, we, we've talked about, you know, we're not going to pay, you know, ten, hundred thousand dollars a month to put up billboards, you know, and send out flyers and stuff like that. But this is even better when, when families come to the table and, and, and see how it works, you know? And, and even when it doesn't work, they can figure, they, we know, they know what to do about it and how to advocate. And by the way, it's hard being a parent, you know? If, I know a bunch of us went to pre-K graduations last year. When you see how young those parents are, oh, my gosh. I don't think I was ever that young.
I want to go to two point five. Because being the oldest guy in the room, I, age means a lot to me. And so my, my point here, I had a, a conversation with one of our teachers that if I'm not mistaken, I think she must be fifty-one, been with us thirty-some years, and she's very retired. And she not, it was not so much the complaining of the money, but I feel that if we don't, if we don't address or, or, or let people know that we appreciate the tenure, the loyalty, the years that these people have been with us, and accord, and pay them accordingly, I think we're going to continue getting the quality entry level, but it takes, from entry level to high performance, it takes experience. No matter what you do. Now you have an experienced person that's been with us twenty-five or thirty years, and, and somehow or other, as, as we have experienced every year since I've been on the board, there's been a rate increase, and we did, we did address it this last time. But I'd like to make sure that we address the people that have been with us the twenty-five years, thirty years, thirty-five years, that have paid the dues and have stuck with us and are still performing at, at, at our expectations. And I, again, I'm not trying to create something that's not there. I think it's an issue that's very real, because I'd rather keep a thirty-year-old person going instead of them saying, well, I'm, I'm going to retire, I'm, I'm tired. Well, why are you tired? Well, you know, we don't have to recognize the money, it's, it's kind of the money, but it's not the money, but it is. It's when you talk to them about it, it is, it is, they see that big increase in the lower levels and the little miniscule increase in the guys that have been around twenty-five or thirty years. So I'd, I'd like for you to at least visit with, with, with you people and see if we can continue looking at that and be cognizant that those, those people bring a lot of value to the table. Anybody? Do I have a second?
Yeah, I mean.
You're here.
I agree, I mean, I, I can see it at where I'm at. They have a lot of young people there, but also the teachers that have been there quite a while. They, they, they have their, their programs way above, above what a starting teacher would have. A starting teacher struggles, you know, because of, yeah. But somebody that's been there a long time and performs at those levels that you're saying should be, feel that they are valued and valued not only in, in words, but in many other ways that we could probably do. And I, I think you're right. We need to have retention. Retention will keep our students at that high level of performance. I think that it's just something that is part of the nature of this business. If I'm not right. Retention of, of, of qualified teachers that have been here quite a while. I concur.
Okay. Anything else on our people? I took down the, the parent engagement promotion. Three is, and we're using these, I think, clever headings, our investment. Three point one, earn a financial rating high enough to allow the district to operate efficiently and model good stewardship of taxpayer dollars. Unassigned fund balance as recommended by the state and is considered a best practice across the country. Will cover at least sixty days of the next year's operating budget. Award all design and C-Mark contracts by two thousand twenty. That means because of what we've experienced, because what we've seen happening in districts around us, nowhere is it truer that time is money. And Lindley and her team have worked hard to accelerate the process while still maintaining all of the, the legal requirements in terms of how we award contracts. And so by the end of this year, we will have awarded all of the major contracts and the design, as well as the construction timeline, should be complete. So you're going to see here later that we're making some commitments to you and to our community. Three point four has to do with something that we promised the folks at LeBaron Park, and that is that we're going to do everything we can to make sure that when you arrive at LeBaron or at Lancaster Elementary School, that you will have the same learning environment, because Lancaster does not have refrigerated air at present. But since there being inconvenience, we'd like to move them to the top of the list and get that done. get that done.
I was just going to ask, is that the only one that's being completed in 2020 is Lancaster?
Um, yes.
The others are, uh, start, they won't be completed. They'll be, you can see that under, sorry, I don't have a microphone, but under 3.7, we'll complete four of those by 2021.
Okay. Do we, do we know which four yet or are we still figuring that out or?
Um, we do, but I don't have, and hang on, and I can refer to the list here. Give me a sec. We talked about it a little bit before.
Yeah.
So, um, we have construction from June 20 to December 21. We would be talking about Sageland, Loma Terrace, Mesa Vista, Del Valle High School. And that gets four, those four, that would be 2021. And I will add one other caveat on these. You'll notice that most of them say under budget. It should be within budget.
And there, there may be some thought like this because, uh, I was guilty of it. There, there will be misconception in the community that, um, installing refrigerated air is something that you should be able to do relatively quick. Uh, there are a couple of things that make the installation of refrigerated air, um, more challenging in some cases than re-modernization or new construction. And that is you're not allowed to work with children anywhere on the premises. Uh, the second is, is you've got to, um, bring in design people because all of our schools or most of our schools are designed differently. And so it's a different, uh, design package for every school. Once you get the design package done and you figure out what the best way to, um, provide refrigerated air to the students and, and heat to the students and the faculty, then you have to create a schedule that avoids students. And even at elementary schools, uh, there's rarely, uh, a day a week that you don't have students. Uh, the second thing is most of our schools have activities, uh, planned for the weekend, so we have to work with them on that. And here's the third, um, and it's going to sound a little bit like an excuse, but the reality is, uh, El Paso and the providers are saturated with work right now. You've got Socorro, El Paso, the city of El Paso, El Paso Community College, the county, nobody is short on work right now. And so they are, as it is, demanding a, a pretty high price to make you a priority. By you, I mean to make us a priority. What I think is helping us is that, uh, Lindley and her team, the last four or five years, um, have become and have earned a reputation for being, um, incredibly dependable when it comes to paying our bills on time, which allow them to pay their employees on time. So in many cases, they'd rather work for us than take a risk and work for someone, uh, that maybe doesn't have that, that record or that reputation. Um, I told her to be conservative in terms of the number of schools we can realistically expect to get done, but it will take probably a big chunk of the five-year period to get refrigerated air out to all of the schools. Anything that you want to add?
That's absolutely correct. These are very complex projects, more so than the new construction. They will take more time. We want reliable contractors and it, and we need to space them out in order to not glut the market with work.
Dr. Latoya, um, you know, one of the things that we did as a district in selling the bond was, this was one of the big things that we talked about. And, and by the way, I, I, I totally agree and understand everything you said. We've had these, these discussions before, um, formally and informally. But, um, you know, I, in, in all the noise, that was one of the things that came through was that we were going to, you know, put refrigerated air, we were going to, you know, improve heating systems and, you know, replace heating systems and stuff. So I, I understand everything you said. I, I agree with it. Um, you know, but we can't create resources out of the air, contractors out of the air, but, uh, I think that's something we're going to have to work with the community to make them aware that we haven't forgotten about it, you know? The, the Capistrano project, you know? But, uh, you know, for the last five years, I have been beat up on that routinely, you know? And it wasn't because we were not aware of it or, you know, we didn't have things under control. It was just, that's what it took to get to that point. So I, I just, I'm not sure how we communicate that to the, the community effectively. So, um, we can talk about transparency that, you know, we do, we do want to talk about things and we don't, you know, we don't want folks to say, well, you guys are nice hiding it. Um, I'd like for us to be upfront about it as much as we can.
Yeah, I think as, as you were speaking, I think that we could create, um, a pamphlet, a, a document for each of the seven separate distinct feeder patterns that, um, we could present to and disseminate to those in attendance as to what the next five years will look like and what they can expect to see in their community, their feeder pattern, uh, by way of a timeline that says, you know, by the end of 2021, you should see, you know, this complete. Uh, in 2022, the Capistrano renovation will be done so that they can tell what, what they, so they can see what they should expect. Uh, it could start with, you know, all the, the softball and baseball fields this summer kind of kicking off and it's on there. And part of the reason I added it to, to this instrument was because recently when people, um, were irritated at, uh, our, our recent contract discussion, I realized that a lot of people out there don't have any idea what's been accomplished in five years, right? A lot of people don't like to hear about good things as it is, but we've got to do a better job of putting it out there. And I wanted them to understand the magnitude of what we were going to do over the next five years by almost itemizing everything so that when something, something is achieved, we get credit for it, we acknowledge it, uh, it, and it, and it has to happen in a very timely way and it's got to be a big damn deal because people aren't paying attention. And, um, it, it can, it can be frustrating sometimes. So I think what I'll do is I'll work with Patricia. Patricia's a little, uh, undermanned and we're going to talk about, uh, some redesign ideas and things like that and start putting together some very attractive, informative, glossy flyers that I take with me when I go out and have a meeting at a state of high school and tell them what, what, what they should expect over the next five years. Because I recently got a call from a gentleman in the Atlanta High School feeder pattern who was asking me to buy, um, backstop nets for the baseball program. And I said, uh, that, that typically goes through, uh, your athletic coordinator to the athletic director and there's a budget. Um, and he, he kind of shot back with, why, you've already given, you know, Riverside everything and Del Valle is getting this. Kind of went through a list of things and I thought.
Yeah, we didn't.
I missed it. Uh, what did we get?
We didn't get, we didn't get nothing. They got everything. And so I, I think that just, just to save us from all of this, um, sometimes it's just ignorance. I need to keep going out there and telling them what's coming up and when it, when they should expect it.
You have two constituencies. You, you, first off, you have your employees, you have the administrators and the teachers and stuff, and I think that needs to come from, from you and, and from the associates. They need to talk about those things because they're interested too. You know, when you get invited to, um, to a school to have lunch for faculty development so that you can sweat alongside with them, you know, so that they can make a point, you know? Um, you know, that's, that's kind of interesting, you know? Um, so that's number one. And then the other thing too is that all those folks that we brought in, into this room to, to talk about priorities and stuff like that, you know, let's bring them in, you know? And the more people we can have that can tell the story and, and, and also too, we want them to be advocates for us and to hold us responsible.
And a lot of them are coming back. I think Abby's been working with them as the bond oversight committee. So it was one thing to be the facility advisory committee. Now they're the, the ones that are in the best position to provide oversight and make sure that we adhere to the timelines and the projects that, that we promised, you know? It didn't go completely unnoticed because I will tell you that rarely do I go somewhere where someone asks why none of the neighboring school districts managed their bond the way we managed the 2015 bond. So some people are aware of, of what happened over that five-year period, um, but I think we need to do a better job at the grassroots or at the organic level.
And this is, this is one of those things where we take a victory lap on and it's about leadership, you know? It's about leadership all the way around on, on this thing.
Well, and here's what I would say. We do some things incredibly well and I think because we're so myopic on test scores and professional development, um, there are other areas that don't get and sometimes I believe don't deserve that level of, of attention because if, I'm going to take my eye off this ball and I'll give you an example. So the parent engagement piece that I was just thinking about, I think it's important. But is it important enough to supersede? Because if everything's important, then nothing's important. The strategic action plan is a way to say what is absolutely non-negotiable. No one is going to quarrel with or argue, uh, that parent engagement, parent involvement, community outreach isn't important, but does it live in this camp? Because this camp is going to be a money driver, right? This is where we're going to spend money. And same thing can be said for, you know, the wands of, of the world out there that are dropping $200,000 a year to hire, uh, advertising, uh, firms from LA. Uh, I'm not sure it's, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure that it has slowed down the bleeding that he's having in his district when he's losing over a thousand students a year. And so I don't want to do that. I think we can get better, but for the, for the purpose of this, this is about when we enter into a covenant, we as the leaders and say, these four or five things are absolutely non-negotiable and nothing should take the place of academic achievement, college career readiness, maintaining this great environment, this climate that we've developed, including paying our employees and demonstrating that we value them. And by all means, Lindley and team, do not allow this district to go bankrupt by making, by making poor decisions, right? If you can do those four things, right? And maybe start working on social emotional leadership and mental health and all of those things, right? But it's kind of what the young lady was saying is, look, you start getting into the fives and sixes of things that you're telling people are your priorities, nothing's your priority. And not that they're not important or that they shouldn't be addressed, but what I think the community wants from us is what are the three or four things based on data and based on what you believe your charge is and your vision and your mission? What are the things that you absolutely want the 12 people that I call the tip of the spear to focus on for the next five years? And by the way, I'm going to evaluate you on the progress, right? Because I'm going to turn around and I'm going to evaluate Brenda and Brenda's going to turn around and evaluate Irene at Ramona on the same standards. We're all connected, right? They need to know what we think is important.
And that's why, or, or did you try to lead into the social emotions?
No, not yet. I was going to wait for the end. I was going to run through these and then that kind of put it out there and tell you what I've done and some of our conversations about mental health and all of the things that are out there.
Can I just add, uh, or ask a question? When you cover, as you go out and talk to the public about especially our investment here, um, really have, uh, an explanation of how we chose which schools are going to get the, the HVACs first because there is always going to be that argument, oh, you like Riverside better, the example that you're using, or I know it's not wrong.
There you go.
In this case, no, no. In this case, I'll pick Del Valle, for example, Del Valle High School, because it's one of the first full ones in 2021. So, no, no, I'm not arguing. I, I'm, in no way am I arguing. I'm trying to say that no matter where you go, whatever school you go to, if it's not their school that's getting the HVAC first, and HVAC is something that every one of us in El Paso understands simply because of the fact it's so hot here, being able to explain to them, there was, this is the reason why we prioritize these schools first is incredibly important because there's always going to be that claim of favoritism, that, that community's more important, we care about them more or blah, 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 whatever reason people want to give. And so those glossy new things that we give to our, our learning communities also I think should have some explanation in some way of why things were prioritized and how they were prioritized.
But I, I think we can also do that in this narrative because remember, a lot of the academic things are going to be continuing the same. We can have shorter descriptions because we're going to do the same thing, only more of it. These details about the bond projects were not in the last strategic plan, so we could probably spend more space talking about them. And I think it's important to, to do what Dr. Del Torre said about the HVAC because there is not a way to do them all at once. We cannot physically do them all upfront. And so I think we have to do something to explain the logic of why it takes time and which ones are doing, being done in what order. And, um, and in fact, there was a little bit of priority in the bond order that you guys passed. It identified learning communities as the priority. So that was there. And so I think we can look at this and, and spend some time bringing the, the narrative to you all to explain why this isn't, we're not dragging this out as a matter of choice or money. You just, it physically takes, as I understand, moving people from here to here to here and there's only so many days in the week that you can get it done.
That part I think is kind of our role. If we understand it, I turned it on, oh, I had it on the whole time. So I, I think that's our role as well as, as the community representatives. So if we understand it, then we're able to communicate it out and I think that's also important.
I, I agree completely, but I'll be honest, I've, since I've gotten on the board, um, Penny's and Ms. Bankston has been asking for more HVAC at Parkland and I've been working at that. So to me, when we say 2021 and I, I look at the list, it's very difficult to me to go to, to my community and say, Del Valle is getting it first before us and why is Del Valle getting it first? Because I don't know at this point. So I think that that true, that does need to be explained to us and it's our job to explain to our community. I don't have an answer right now to be able to go to them and say, why is Sageland more important? Why is Loma Vista more important? Why is Mesa Vista and Del Valle more important? Not more important, but prioritize first because I don't have that answer. And I think that that's something that I think every one of our communities would ask us as we go through a long, through a bond is be able to describe it. So maybe it shouldn't be Dr. Del Torre's responsibility, I agree, but I would like to have at least a one-page or something I can go to my community and say, this is why.
I agree with Richard. I think we need to have a reason why. That way we can, like you said, we're, we're the face and I'll be, I'll be more than happy to stand in front of somebody and explain to them why. But if I don't have the why, you know, that's, that's the hard part. So I agree with Rich.
I, I think I like the idea of a timeline that shows when, but also an explanation that they're asking for as to why this is happening in this and why it's happening at this time and everything else. A timeline, I think is very important because, uh, the community understands that right away. It says, okay, we're targeted for this. Then with an explanation, okay, you need to go through some engineering, you need to go through some assessment, you need to have, because of the age of the building and stuff like that, and because like you mentioned, the students are in session and we have to make accommodations for them so they won't be in the area when they're working on these things. And, um, I think all those things have to be laid out in order for us, as well as the community, understand how, um, the list was developed, okay? With a timeline. And, uh, I think that would clarify a lot of things, not only for us, but when we go out to the community and tell them this is, this is why it's happening this way. And I know that HVAC, like you says, is a very complex thing. You just don't go put a HVAC where there was an evaporative cooler. I mean, there's a lot of other things that, that, uh, come into play is power, weight and, and distribution. I mean, it's, it's, it's just not something that you can do overnight. So, uh...
And contractors, I, I think we had a conversation where, right now contractors are limited. And I, being in the, in the industry, I know that everybody's at work. You got your best contractors, your best labors, you know, they're working. So getting that, to wait for the time for the good, good contractors. So getting that to wait for the time for the good, good contractors, it is, it's a problem.
Completely understand and I can certainly understand why Penny feels that way. She has been waiting, it gets miserable. I think V L K owes it to us to explain how they arrive at the timeline. That's their job, they're going to get paid, you know, in excess of $5 million to sort of manage this bond. And one of their responsibilities is to be able to provide us with the explanation and the rationale as to, because they're, they're ultimately the ones that are working with the available engineers and architects and contractors and creating the timelines. And they're the ones creating the, the scope and the sequence of the schools over the next five years so that we get done in time. So I don't mind equipping you guys with that and certainly having it available to me so that I can speak to how we arrived at the timeline. Did you want to add anything, Lyman?
Just one quick caveat that you might consider of keeping in the back of your minds when you're talking with your community. We had the bid packages that were life cycle renovation for the end of 2015. Those were already under design and that's largely why you see those projects coming first. Because what we did is hold those until 2019 passed. Then we said, now supplement with a refrigerated air conversion. So those projects were supposed to be done as part of 2015. We held them. So it makes sense that we would supplement their design and carry those out first. The remainder of the packages, we will definitely come back to you and explain to you how those were prioritized and why they fall later in the entire bond program for 2019. But everything we talked about with regard to 2020, 2021, that's related to the end of lives of bond 2015 lifecycle that's being carried out to complete our commitment to the community on bond 2015.
No further questions?
All right. So as you can see, we've went ahead and we've added every project. And, and we may be adding others as soon as we get the final list. So that when someone says, what have you accomplished? And they want, under an open records request, to look at this document, they can, there's a record of what's been accomplished. And by the way, over the next four years, there could be things that surface that this board may ask to have inserted into the evaluation instrument. And you completely have the authority to do that as things come up. Because as you know, school happens. That means things that we can't even imagine could potentially happen. So those are all basically all the renovation projects and timelines, artificial surface, lifecycle projects. 3.15 is important, complete renovations by 2/24 on time and under budget. And then six life cycles in the last year on 3/16 would mean that bond 2019 is complete as well and that we would have invested $860 million in about an eight, nine year period. It's not just about kids and teachers, but the economy in this community, you know, it, it, it's a big pop. It's, it, people don't get it and some people will never get it, but it is unheard of in a district with declining enrollment, an older population of people still living in their homes who have taken on this much burden for generations of kids that they won't be alive to see for the next 50 years.
And Dr. Dattor, I think this is an excellent document to put, put it, it holds us accountable to those same taxpayers who, who entrusted us with, with getting these projects done on time and under budget. And so we have a reference to be able to speak to it.
And if you take this home and, and you see another something that you think needs to be codified, this would be the, the, the place to do it. And it would be almost like a historical account of what will happen over the next five years. And that's why it'll be a little thicker than this. So the next time one says, you guys haven't done crap in five years and all you're doing is paying each other more money and the usual thing, you almost want to just go. Not that. All right. And then after the investment, we get to an area that, that I think is, is going to be helpful for me to get people to stop focusing just exclusively on star and end of course and start thinking, this is about their future and, and their future isn't in high school. It's what we did for them that put them in a position after high school to have a better quality of life and thrive. And, and that, that requires college, career, military opportunities. So graduation rate is typically where we, we start. You can see the baseline is 91 for a four year graduate. For a five year graduates, 92.4. And for a six year graduate, it's 92.5. We'd like to get to 93 for all three of them and better if possible. To get an A, I think in that domain, what's the state asking for? 95, 96, which that's, of all the things and talking to superintendents with that they say is probably not realistic is, is that 95 unless it's a smaller high school in a very affluent area? Increase the percent of graduates who meet college readiness criteria as measured by T S I. We're at 42% in reading. We want to get to 50%. We're at 25% in math. Would like to get to 35% at minimum.
Okay. On, on these ones, the 4.2, 4.3 and 4.4, can I suggest going back to like, does everything belong on there and trying to remove some of the stress of our high schools? Instead of making them separate ones, can we just name it as a T S I criteria? Because that's part of your report card. So for example, instead of taking consolidate 4.2, 4.3 and 4.4, instead make it something like percentage of students that graduate having met the T S I criteria in both math and reading. Currently, our district on our last report card was 30%. So we can say increase it from 30% to whatever number you feel like you want to use. The reason why I say consolidate those is that instead of putting so much pressure on our high schools to try to say, we got to get all these kids in our college prep classes or get these kids to SAT or these kids to T S I, it actually combines SAT, T S I, ACT and college prep all into one. It'll ensure that our kids are graduating, college ready in both math and reading. And it allows our high schools flexibility to say, the way that they hit that mark will vary. Instead of saying by these, all three of these things, they have to try to improve.
No problem. No good deed goes unpunished. Make sure you clean that language up and you send it to Susan.
Yeah. I was like, what language? I didn't use language.
But didn't, didn't we, didn't we ask that question on Tuesday? And we learned that it had to be tracked individually?
Oh, the, the report card is actually the very beginning of your taper report. Says for C C M R says college, T S I criteria in both math and reading. That's why I gave you the percentage of 30%. That's what our district was on 2018 graduates, which is your 2019 accountability. So we can take that as our baseline of 30% and decide from there, whatever you all think is a reasonable amount to increase by in the next five years.
But maybe I didn't, maybe I didn't hear you correctly. So we still should have separate goals for T S I and SAT and.
No, you shouldn't. And you should consolidate 4.2, 4.3 and 4.4. Because within the T S I criteria, there are those four measurable goals. Your T S I, your SAT, your ACT and your college prep class. All four of those can be mixed. And what's nice about the way that the state accounts for this is they actually allow you to mix and match those. So instead of forcing a school to try to hit all of these different things, you're giving a school the flexibility to say, if student A hits the SAT benchmark in English, they might hit the, the math benchmark in T S I or college prep class. Instead of having a mix, instead of forcing them to try to hit all of these. It's more tailored to the student. It's gives flexibility to high school, doesn't put the pressure of trying to hit all of these things.
I like it. 4.5.
Actually, can I take 4.5, 4.6 and 4.9?
Go ahead.
Okay.
4.5.
4.5, I'm sorry, this is where I live. So this is my, so 4.5, 4.6 and 4.9, I think can also be consolidated. 4.5, 4.6 and 4.9. All of those are about earning college credit, your dual credit, your AP, your on-ramps. I think once again, the, the way we give our students, we give so many options to our students to be able to earn college credit. Instead of trying to force our high schools to ram down their throats, you have to take dual credit, you have to take AP, you have to take on-ramps because the district's holding us to having this percentage. Instead, maybe we can combine all those and create one goal that says percentage of students that will graduate with at least, and then you guys decide. Three hours of college credit, six hours of college credit, nine hours of college credit. I don't care how they earn it, but they can earn it through dual credit, AP or on-ramps. So because there's some kids that take the pathway of AP, some kids that like mix and match, some kids that do all dual credit. But all you're trying to say is we want to graduate our kids with at least some college credit hours. You all decide how many hours you want them to earn, but they can earn it in three different ways. Instead of trying to force schools to hit that percentage, that magic number for on-ramps, for dual credit and AP, it's just, let's get them to hit it some way and get college credit. Because that's the whole point of it. What do you, well, yeah, but the, the thing is, so the way you have it laid out here, you're forcing a school to get, we got to get this many percentage of our kids to get in dual credit. We have to get this many percentage of our kids to be in on-ramps. But why? In other words, there's some, sometimes like, for example, English three, you can do AP, you can do dual credit, you can do on-ramps. Do you really want to force the school to try to get all these percentages? Or do you just want to say, I don't care how you do it, but as a junior, take English three and get some college credit? That's, that's all I'm saying is, I, I think it, it allows schools flexibility. My whole thing is, let's don't make goals where our kids, our schools have to be trying to hit this magic number. What is the overall goal of 4.5, 4.6 and 4.9? Overall goal is get college credit. So let's, let's say percentage of students that graduate with at least, and then you guys decide. Does it want to be six hours, nine hours, three hours, whatever you want.
I like it. Keep going. Yes.
Okay. One more. There's one more. I'm sorry, I, I care so much about this part. So like 4.8. The one part I have concern about 4.8 is the 30%. Region wide E P C C, early colleges graduation rate is 73% with an associate's degree. We're right now at 64%. Do we want to lay them so much lower than the rest of our region? When the region wide, early colleges, students that earn an associate's is 73%. I think 30 might be a little low for me, to me. Because if that's their whole goal is to be in an early college, the goal is to earn an associate's degree. And I don't know what Ms. Manchaca might have on.
Exactly. There is a revised blueprint for early college high schools that now contains outcomes based measures and there's three of them. And because our colleges that are currently standing now, it's going to be very difficult for them to reach all of that simply because of the population they have. And so that's what we're looking at right now. We're trying to identify those indicators that we need to push. But this is based on the new early college textbook blueprint.
Yeah, and I know, but I mean, we know that the rest of Texas is really struggling with early colleges. But when you talk to Dr. Serata and you talk to E P C C, we are the model for early colleges in the entire state. And if we're at 73% as a region, I, I feel like we're aiming low at 30%. I think maybe saying 60% and above, we're maintained at 60%. I don't know if that's a realistic or how you all feel about that, but I just know that Dr. Serata is very proud of the fact that he always brags about that 73% of our early colleges students graduate with an associate's. And so if we look at 30% compared to what the region is, it seems kind of low to me.
I think that, thank you for your ideas. I think that what we're looking at here is the early college high school specifically, Valle Verde. They're going to have a very hard time meeting the distinguished level. Right now they're at the early college. And then we want to make sure that Hanks, Parkland and Isleta go to the early college status while we work on getting the distinguished level. And that requires a lot of, excuse me, that requires a lot of identifying students because we've got the access outcomes based measures, the attainment outcomes based measures. And then we also have the achievement outcomes based measures. So I think that if you are okay with it, I'd like to leave that and track it that way. At least for, for now. Is everyone okay with that?
That's fine. I mean, once again, this is my idea, it's not a board's decision. That was, that was just my opinion. It wasn't what the whole.
Yeah, we can do that.
And you're right, distinguished is a lot harder. Most of the early colleges aren't even distinguished. So it is a higher standard when you're a distinguished early college. You're absolutely right.
And this, this is one of those things we're going to have to come back and address later because the legislature's already said that they're real unhappy about the way the rest of the state is performing. And because of that, they're going to come back and say, you know, you, you can't just open an early college academy. Yeah.
4.1010, increase the percent of sped students who earn an advanced degree planned upon graduation. 411, increase the proportion or percent of graduates who are considered college, career or military ready as defined by state accountability. Is that redundant, anything else we've already? So I ended up with a 4.1, a 4.2, a 4.3, then 4.4, 4.5, 4.6 and 4.7 instead of 11. Okay.
Can I, can I just get a clarification? On 4.11, I, I've heard something over the weekend about that the P E A has signed an agreement with the, with the federal government or pending the federal agreement with the federal government so that we can track the number of, of students that are, are going into the military. Is that, and I don't know where I heard it and I couldn't ask the follow up question. Is that a done deal or is that just a pending thing? Do we know?
I don't know. Let's find out.
They are working on that because it's C C M R money is going to be tied to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the other thing too, and, and I, I don't want to make this harder on, on, on 4.10. You know, one of those, those things that, that I keep hearing and not, not so much about us. I think we do a good job and, and our T L C C folks do, do an excellent job of, of, of serving students and such is that I keep hearing the term that we're graduating kids to the couch, especially those sped kids, you know? And, you know, I know we got a lot on our plate. I know you have a lot on your plate and your team does, but you know, we need to do things in a meaningful way sometimes. It doesn't have to have a metric attached to it. You know? And, and I can't think of a better bunch of, 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 of students that deserve than those kids who, who age out of our, our, our special ed programs. And so, you know, again, it doesn't have to be a metric in here, but I just, I, I'd like to keep that in people's mind that, that we, we need to, since we're, we're better and we believe we're better and we can do it better, that we continue to explore better ways of doing that.
And attainment and things of that nature.
Yeah. Job placements and stuff like that. So, and, and T L C C does a great job already, but I, you know, I don't know. I'm just one of those things that perhaps we need to look at at some point.
So now we have two little additional slots if we need them. Goal five, goal six. And the floor is open for an area, a goal, a priority, a commitment by anyone who feels strongly enough that, that it should live in this document. As you all may aware, be aware, for some time Catherine has had an interest, a strong interest in really investing in, better understanding, improving the climate in some of our schools, primarily our middle schools, high schools around those mental health issues, the bullying, the socio emotional, common decency, kindness. Rack didn't work out very well at the middle school and the high school. However, were required by law to have something in place to support these students. I have, I think a couple of documents. I think Susan has one. And I took the liberty of just going and having our research and evaluation department do an assessment of something that we've talked about in terms of the number of incidents that are being reported. Yeah, no, they're two together. So just keep moving them. There's two of them, yeah. And then I'll send some the other way. And over the last several weeks, we've met with counselors, we've met, uh, as a staff to, to really try and get our head around what we could bring to you tonight, uh, in the area of socio-emotional learning. And what we quickly determined was that all of us have, I think, a different interpretation of what's happening in our schools, and we're not sure, we're not sure what we'd like our schools to look like in two, three, five years. In other words, what is it we're trying to address? Um, and so we started with, what do we currently have in place that speaks to socio-emotional learning? And that's this page here. And then the other one I gave you was, I was ready and, and, and ready and prepared to, you know, get that whole, you guys are the only district that doesn't have a police force argument. So I said, let's look back. We went back to 2012, and that's the second document that shows you how we do when compared to the other two districts with, uh, sworn peace officers and a police department, uh, in terms of those incidents that are required by law to be reported. Um, and as you can see, it, we're all generally, um, in about the same ballpark. So what we currently have in place in the district to try and create a better atmosphere, a better climate, a better environment, a kinder society, um, is, is the curriculum that you all love, and, uh, it's the random acts of kindness. And I will say that it's been better received at the elementary schools than it has at middle schools, uh, and high schools. I don't think there's anything wrong with the curriculum. I just, uh, I don't think that, again, going back to what I said earlier, people are feeling like they already have so many responsibilities, right? And we celebrate a bunch of them all the time. Academic achievement, growth, uh, almost a letter A grade, um, greater number of students taking dual credit courses, uh, dual language programs, I mean, single gender schools, that there, they feel like they, they can't bear to take on another responsibility. And as much as we want to pretend and say it's not that big of a burden, the consensus, I think, at middle school and the high school is, yes, it is. Yes, it is, and sometimes we are, we don't believe that this curriculum is gonna have the intended impact on these students because of their, their age group, either middle school or high school. They don't take it serious. I don't, I don't believe in it, so I don't take it serious. Because I don't take it serious, they in turn don't take it serious, and they're okay just admitting that. At the elementary school, I think, um, it's foundational. There's still time to impress upon children the importance of being kind and polite and accepting and tolerant, all of the things that, that the curriculum, um, purports to do. But that's what we have in place in terms of a district-wide program. Um, in 2019, uh, we've provided training, uh, for the Castle Framework around social and emotional learning. Uh, they were led by Keith Matheny. He will be coming to address you, uh, in May, and to try and help all of us understand what it is we're trying to achieve. Because I think all of us have some sorts, somewhat of a different ideas to what it will look like when we know we've done a better job, uh, in the area of, um, a better culture, a better climate, a kinder world, um, less dramatic and tragic incidents that, that tend to keep coming up. And I think the one thing that everybody did agree on is, um, a lot of this may have always happened, we're just starting to see it much sooner in the lower grades, um, than we used to, is what sort of the counseling department. Mental health awareness training, um, that was triggered, uh, back in 2018, 19. Uh, as you can see, 102 counselors have been trained, 157 special education staff members, um, have been trained, 52 nurses, and then intern counselors were asked to go back to their campus and train faculty and staff, staff. Uh, we've added, uh, personnel, licensed personnel, and former counselors and school psychologists. We've, uh, in 2017, 18, uh, began developing the non-negotiable safety lessons on bullying, cyberbullying, and warning signs of suicide risk. Uh, emergency preparedness is, is available in the district. The hotline's available, the online tool is available, but it feels like it's a bunch of different, separate, maybe not as coherent, they're not connected, everybody's kind of just, like we're throwing spaghetti on the wall, and it, and it doesn't come across as a nice, comprehensive, committed plan.
And I think too, I, I had a discussion, um, this morning with, um, our, my principal there at El Valle Middle School, and, and within the next coming school year, and thank you, um, Dr. Kennedy, for, for working real closely with, um, with El Valle, to, to have the, I guess it's the first period to be, um, what do you call it? Advisory class where, where some of this, to start the day off, so the socio-emotional component of learning would kind of, that's how they're gonna start the day, and that'll be at all, all grade levels. So I guess with this, um, what stood out to me, I, I appreciate all of the, um, different programs that we have and the, and the trainings that we administer and things like that. I think they're extremely important and useful. But I think here with the socio-emotional learning specifically, and, and, um, the trainings were led, I guess, how, how are we able to measure what it is that is being learned? And how can we incorporate that into a commitment, um, that ties into what our strategic plan is? Because I, I think we have, we're doing really well academically, and, and we've, we've moved that needle beyond what was the expectation, um, when, in 2015. So I think where, where we're at now is in a place where we, we have different learners, different experiences at each of the schools. And how do we get to the point where, where a child will have a great experience regardless of what school that they're in, or what learning community they're, they're attending?
And, and one of the things that, that did surface was, um, and it's sort of counterintuitive, but we're painting this picture based on all of these experiences, yet if you look at the parent survey, it's at four point something. The teacher's survey is mid 4.0. Um, administrators feel like they're getting enough support, and so all of these indicators, including the one about the number of incidents, um, over time, I thought they would show a spike going up at all schools, but it seems to look like, a lot like it looked in 2012. So.
Because what we're measuring is the things that are reported.
Right.
We're not looking at the students that don't report, for whatever reason it is.
That's true.
That keep that to themselves.
That's true.
So I, I just want to be able to show that we are moving the needle. And I'm not saying by, by 2022, I want to see that each kid has a happy smile on their face throughout the school day, but what I do want to show, and I would like us to take that leap and commit to, is that we are committed to, to, to incorporating the socio-emotional learning component into our strategic plan because it is part of where education is going.
Anyone else have feelings?
The only thing that, that, that I see about that, and I agree, I think we need to add this some way or another, but when you're thinking about how, how do you measure this? And to me, that's, that's the component that I'm not sure that we can, I mean, if we're, we're looking for something that's tangible and measurable, um, how is that done? And I, I'm not sure how, how, um, how you add that to this, when how is it, I mean, how do you measure it? Yeah. So that, that's my only comment. And then the only other thing is, um, what I hear from most of the teachers and most of the, not the administration, but most of the teachers that I've talked to, is that the RAC, uh, the one that they're doing at Bel Air is not RAC, it's, um, Character Strong. All of these things, the lessons that are provided in those, in those things don't really touch what the kids need, and, um, they're either having to improvise to, to make it more, um, more worthy of the, the student's attention, or to, to keep the student's attention, or they're just kind of doing it, and, like you said, doing it, and then, I did it, there we go, check the list, gone. Um, I've had a couple of teachers, I had one in particular told me, that's one reason why she's considering, um, considering, um, retirement, and she's a really good teacher, is because she feels like she's spending her time doing a curriculum that's, you know, not, not touching the need. So that's just my comment. I don't know, I don't know how we, how we fix that, but I do think we do need to have something to address it, so.
And it could be not necessarily an entire curriculum. I'm going to assume, although I didn't get to speak to Mr. Matheny, right? I, I, and I look forward to his presentation, but it could be something that is, is incorporated as part, um, of, of the day without us even noticing, without, without the, the student noticing, hey, we're doing a whole lesson. It could just be a, a, a part of a, as a teaching method. I, I don't know, and I, I'm with you, I don't have the.
Yeah. It, it, it can, and I think it has been, at least at the elementary school, oftentimes, a thematic approach where they're doing something in English Language Arts, reading, writing, but the theme is around respect and kindness, and the activities are, and it's not being specifically pulled up and highlighted as, we're doing this now because it's about socio-emotional learning. So it's a subtle way of inserting it into, uh, heck, Washington crossing the Delaware and, you know, courage. Maybe that was a little extreme. Let me see if I can create something to work that one in, right? But it's part of the same curriculum, um, at, at the elementary school. And then there's also an opinion out there, and this is one of many opinions, because this is all over the place, and that is, you, you don't make the investment at the middle school or the high school, you make the investment and you make it hard when they're little and they're still.
Mal.
Malable, perfect word. Malable, and what you'll see in a few years is you'll see a kinder, more tolerant, better behaved child in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. I don't know that we have a few years to wait for that, but I think the best thing for us to do, rather than just jump in and say, here, create this checklist, to your point, without a lot of thought and consideration, would be sort of a, an exercise in futility. I think what we need to commit to, and we're willing to commit to, and Susan and I have talked about it, Dr. Kennedy and I have talked about it, is that we're gonna bring Mr. Matheny in to present to all of us as a first step, and then go from there, and really spend the better part of the rest of this year into next year to try to understand what it is we're trying to accomplish. And then when, and only when, we think we can codify it in writing, and we have a plan, then we drop it in there, and, and at least it's well-informed, we're educated, we know what we're looking for, whether or not you can put a number to it or not, who knows? But right now, all we'd be able to, I could say, you know what, we're gonna increase the number of counselors, um, and, no, that was somebody else that said that. Um, no, we're gonna increase the number of counselors.
Here we go again.
Sorry. Um, but they're gonna be dedicated to crisis counseling, not academic counseling. They're not gonna ever get pulled in to look at transcripts or.
Or socio-emotional learning.
You know, but, but what are they called? They're called crisis counselors that deal with this stuff, and they're dedicated to this stuff. Or we're gonna, you know, do a regional model, and we're gonna get more school psychologists in the district to provide trainings on an ongoing basis about the different challenges that children have. But it should come after, I think, uh, at least a four to six-month focused, well-intended.
Needs analysis.
Yes. A needs analysis.
I want, I want to say a few words, if I may. I don't hang around with too many teachers, but that's, that's neither here nor there. Um, I, I had an unfortunate visit with, uh, a client of mine, and this is probably about close to two months ago, and, um, the, the young lady is not part of our, her district, she's in the, in the Sojoro District. And, and I guess my point is that what we're talking about is a reflection of our society, how it's turned south. This young lady is a single parent, uh, two kids. Um, she's not remarried, she's not a single parent, but she remarried. Um, the oldest one is 11 years old, uh, was a straight A student, and for some reason, something's happened, something clicked, and now she's suicidal. The resources are not there, uh, and she feels that these, this, there, there should be some help from the school system, at least in terms of counseling, et cetera, et cetera. The only thing society offers her is just take the, and she has taken this child to, um, Santa Teresa. It, it costs $2,000 every walk, every time you walk in there. I, you, you, there's no way this woman can, but it's not a matter of, of we, us seeking things to do. It's just, this is the aftermath of the deterioration of values. The father of this little girl probably has not seen her or want to have seen her in the last three or four years, and she, she takes it very, very hard, whether it's rebellious or whether it's mental, whatever it might be. This is why I feel that we're touching on something that is very profound, um, and how do we measure? I don't know. You're the experts. But I think that we need to, we need to get in there, and then as we get in there, quantify uh, things that, that occur, because it's, there's a true need for this thing. There's a tremendous need for it. The bullying, the bullying is, the bullying has been going on since I was in school and before I got to school. It's gonna continue. Hopefully, it will lessen, but you gotta, let's, let's, you know, we, we always paint this thing so in the future, this, all you, all you see on TV, go, when you get home, turn on the TV and see the advertisements. It's nothing but killing, war, killing, war and killing. So how do you, how do you make a society soft? Can mentally, we're here to kill. And the kill, the children that, that are up this late, you know, they take it serious, or not, they, they take it for granted. You kill, they get up. It's not that way. But for them, it's easy. And so I think this is something that, that we, where we sit today in 2020, have to address it. Whether it's real or not, it is real. Whether we can measure it, I don't know if we can, but we can certainly attempt to get into, roll up our sleeves and address something that is needed for our children that are impacted. It's not the whole people, it's not the whole, um, uh, group of, of children, it's just that, that certain group. How can this kid go from a straight A student to just jumped off the edge? She's been, she's cut herself, um, um, they put her on some medication, um, I mean, she can go through 20 donuts, and that's part of the medication. See, that's what society offers. Let's, let's, let's put more chemicals in the body, just like the opium, same thing, same difference. Somebody's making money on the deal. So I would really suggest and recommend that we take a good look and sit, put something in terms of goals, uh, and, and see what we can do with it. End of my speech, sir.
Just a comment. Catherine, you know I support you on this, and, um, but, you know, a couple of years ago, we went to a conference, and, and I remember, we're the only ones there, I think there was like half a dozen school districts there, and they gave us this handout, and they talked about the responsibilities that teachers and administrators have in public education. And, you know, 50 years ago, it was that big, you know? And then when you look at the current years, it's just dozens and dozens of mandatory things that public ed has to do to serve students, and that's what we're in the business of, so, I mean, that, we have to accept that. Um, we had a safety and security meeting the other night, Cruz and I, and there were some things in there that we have to do yet, including things having to do with social media, um, things having to do, uh, they asked us a question about how many, about the use of, uh, of, uh, social workers, um, in, in our work, and, you know, which is a whole different discussion. So my comment would be, uh, let's tread cautiously as we go forward, and I'm not, I don't have a problem with initiatives, I have a problem with a metric. Okay, that's just a personal opinion. Okay, that's just a personal opinion. But the other thing too is that I'm not sure we have all the right answers. I think the model, we haven't identified the model, and, and Dr. Lotteri, you know, expounded on that. I, I think that you're absolutely right, elementary is one model, but middle school's a different model, and the, the Project Mail program at the Sota Middle School, I think is a really, really good model. By the way, I saw them do a RAC presentation that was done poorly, but the Project Mail one was just excellent. And, I mean, if you're up for, for cereal at seven thirty or seven fifteen in the morning, it's fabulous to, to see it. So, and then high school, I'm not sure what we need for high school, and, and I think there's different needs out there, and so, um, uh, I, I think we ought to look at, at some different models. Um, I don't, I, I don't, have we heard from this gentleman before? I can't remember.
He's fantastic.
And you saw him, we had, uh, he was presenting to the new teachers.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Um, when you're looking, um, when you're, when you're looking at the models, um, um, when you're looking at the models, um, let's, let's find somebody, let's find somebody from outside. Let's find somebody who's got some different ideas, not crazy stuff, but let's find somebody that can bring some, some fresh ideas, some new ideas to us, you know, and, and, um, that uh, all day long, you know, and then, and I, and just like you, and just like Mr. Rosales, uh, um, then if we need to, we can put a metric to it. But I, I, I think that, you know, there's some intangible things that we can't, you know, non-tangible things that we can't. Yeah, and, and, uh, you know, and, and, and I, I just saw a story earlier this week, I can't remember the name of the school district, and it's one of the more affluent, I think it's one of the affluent school districts in Texas. They've got a suicide problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, uh, you know, this, this is, this district has got money, they've got everything. These kids, they expect to be successful. I mean, they expect them to go to, you know, division one schools, you know, and, and and why do they have, why do they have these problems? So anyways, I, I just think that there, there's an elementary solution, there's a middle solution, there is a high school solution. Um, and then the other thing too, that, that's part of this, is that there has to be a family solution too.
I'll tell you that in, in the meeting this morning, it was, it was interesting to learn that we, we do have a a partnership, I guess you can say, with the Child Guidance Center, but their backlog is, is months, it's months, so, so our, our kiddos who are who might be like that little girl, um, and other students that are in that same situation, they don't have an outlet. They don't have access to, to some of the services that they need, and I'm not saying we're responsible for them by any stretch, but I'm saying that we do need to, we, we're aware of it, they're, they are in our school, and, and they're with us a good part of the day and good part of their lives. So to some degree, we do, we are responsible for them. Um, I think too, when you talked about additional counselors, uh, Mr. Navah? Is he? Leonid Navah? So he, he goes to the middle schools, and he does, you know, several rounds. I think if we have a couple more people just to start that process, when we talk about funding, putting, uh, other folks like Mr. Navah in play at the middle schools where we know we have, um, there might be some things that need to be taken care of at a faster pace would be important too.
Another thing that I just maybe wanna plant a seed for is, um, school board members have a very strong voice and a presence, and some of this really is a policy issue. We're not, some of the students that we get on Monday morning may have already had outcries throughout the weekend, may have already visited behavioral centers, et cetera. And there is disconnect between reporting, for obvious reasons, and being able for us to be armed with the information to be able to help them. We have comprehensive care center that, um, Dr. Kenny, the associates oversee, who, that have great resources. We have resources which we try not to call initiatives, because they're culture-based. We wanna create cultures where students have sense of belonging. And so Project Mails, thank you for bringing that up, because Dr. Kennedy has really, um, been supportive in doing that at the middle schools, and then soon we'll be doing them at the high schools. But, um, I would encourage this, this school board members to find out where those gaps are between what the needs are for students and policy, and have you advocate in that way, because schools wanna do more, but there's only so much that we can do, and our hands are tied. And so that's the seed I'd like to plant. And the other is, is we'd love to have, I've, I've been in Rudy's trainings and so have everyone in here, and those are fantastic and phenomenal. And every time you do expose yourself to education, I think to the beginning point of this, of the retreat is, we need to tell our story better, and so by connecting resources with the community, with the parents, um, together, to your point about family, we can do more. It has to be intentional, and everything we do here is intentional, so while we're doing a lot of the work, and we, we haven't been stagnant, I think that we, we just need to talk about it more and present it better, so that everyone knows that there are connections to serving our students. And, and you're right to be concerned, because we've been serving those students. I know Dr. Kennedy, um, Ms. Manchaca and Brenda have seen it probably for years, and been proactive for years, but just two, those two things.
What we'll do is take a, a lot of, uh, what we learned, um, from you, make adjustments, start dropping in the, those strategies, those approaches that we think are gonna help us reach our goals for every one of, um, the different goals on here. Um, bring it back to you, or, or provide it to you, let you read it through. If the board feels like we need to reconvene to talk more, we can do it. If, uh, it looks good, uh, then we would probably put it on a board agenda in the near future. Uh, I believe the date for Mr. Matheny was supposed to be in May. No, April's fine. If you're ready to go in April. Sooner the better, and then, um, we'll keep that just a brief little overview, and then we'll start looking to see whether someone can really just get our synopsis firing around, around this issue.
Um, also too, uh, uh, Cruz and, and Dr. Lotteri, Brenda mentioned earlier, um, Dr. Chacon mentioned earlier, um, and she had shared it with me in an email about reading academies. And, and we were gonna, she and I were gonna visit on that, but, uh, with your permission, both of your permission, I think there would be a real benefit for the entire ward to, to, to have an, uh, uh, introduction to it.
Of the reading academy model that we're about to roll out? Absolutely. It's a big, it's a big piece of the, the literacy initiative in HB three. Absolutely. I'm trying to think if there's anything else that's coming up. How many are y'all coming to Chicago? No? No? Yes? 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 You don't know? Okay. Yes, sir.
Okay, it's, I think it's nine forty. Well, we've been here quite a bit, a long time, but I think it's been very worthwhile. I wanna thank everybody for staying late. I think the work we've accomplished and, and started today, and, and, and talked about all these issues are so important to our district. And I wanna thank personally everybody for, for being here to support this. Okay, so with that, um, let's see, what is my thing saved? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Adjourn.